Hello and good morning, everybody. Welcome back to, welcome to our second day of this public hearing on the return to school plan. On be- on behalf of the entire school board, I would like to thank you for taking time to share your thoughts with us. The hearing is being livestreamed at F C P S dot E D U slash T V slash C H ninety-nine, that's channel ninety-nine. We have an unprecedented three hundred and thirty-five registered speakers who have been and will continue to address the board to these, at these public hearings. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, and we ask that you stay within that time limit. The timer will start when you begin to speak, and the timer will sound at the conclusion of your three minutes. When your name is called, please unmute, unmute your microphone and begin speaking. If you're not speaking, uh, please make sure your microphone is unmuted. And please unmute your microphone, or please mute your microphone at the end of your three minutes. With that, we will start with speaker one hundred and seventy. That is Manisha Baskar. Speaker one hundreds. Is Manisha there? Manisha Baskar? Okay, we have speaker, what, next is speaker one hundred seventy-one, Zhuo Zhang.
Yeah, good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Um, happy Friday, every- everyone. My name is Zhuo Zhang, and I'm a mom of two young kids. One will go to first grade in Hickok Elementary School, and the other is currently in Munsari pre-k program. Kids are not as sensitive as adults are. We adult understand the six feet of social distance rules. We can talk to each other and keep distance from one another. But our kids don't even understand why they can hug each other and enjoy life together with their friends as before. We, uh, as most of our parents and teachers have probably experienced before. Some kids at nine o'clock drop off look perfectly fine. Eleven o'clock, they slowly look tired. But the temperature is still below one hundred degrees, so that the school won't call their parents yet. And after lunch, all the fever ma- medication is all worn out, and temperature shoot up to one zero two. This is the one way the kids can get strep throat, hand food mouse disease, and flu before, but now the risks is COVID nineteen. Let's think about this scenario. One or two kids in the school get coro- coronavirus from their other family members. They go to the school in the morning without fever or any symptoms. They touch the doors, desks, chairs, and right on the school bus. Since the kids don't understand much about the coronavirus spread, and the teachers are not aware of the fact that they are already infected. And the kids attending the group project. One, two, three, to fifteen. Fifteen seconds is what I heard, that all the coronavirus need to pass from one to the other in close face-to-face situation. And the virus stay on the desks, chairs, buses, and everywhere for another one or two hours. Then those one or two kids pass the disease to their classmates and teachers. The kids go back to home and pass to their parents and siblings. Parents to the office mates and sibling go to the other school. Before we even know it, thousands of people already under risk of being infected. Can we really afford that? I strongly disagree to ask a student physically attend the classes in fourth semester. If we considering reopen school doors, we need the concrete statistics about the coronavirus in our county to support any open decisions. We need to make sure that daily new positive cases are at single DJ levels. And we don't want to see the school become a hub of disease infection. We don't want to put our children into greater risks. We certainly don't want to see our governor announce the school closure again in the first couple weeks in September, when the positive cases rise to the sky high. That will be too late. Life is only once, and once only. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zhang. Next, we have speaker one seventy-two, William Wilder.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning concerning the important issue of our children's emotional, emotional, and social well-being is met in the upcoming school year. My wife and I are just a five F C students, are senior and sophomore at Marshall High School. Rising eighth, seventh grader, more middle school, and a rising fourth grader at West Brier Elementary. We fully appreciate the extraordinary and unanticipated challenge presented to F C P S by the COVID nineteen pandemic, and the school closures necessitated by that public health crisis. The distance environment imposed by the home orders, however, is unsatisfactory. All of our children compared to in-person instruction, in particular to their emotional and social. Indeed, negative impact to mental and emotional health of children. Closeures is signal increased rates of anxiety and depression that have been reported throughout the country in the past. I find the options identified at F C P S for the upcoming school year to be satisfactory. Instead, we support a return to five, for five-day in-person instruction. With an option for parents, their students into virtual learning. And policy and related to public health balance the benefit policy against potential harm created by it. It has become evident with continuing stabilization, with nineteen cases in Virginia, that what was the public health need for isolating children from in-person education is now outweighed by the harm to their educational, emotional, and social well-being created by that isolation. Policy cannot be made on the basis of what is not known, but must reflect the best balancing of benefits and risks based on known information. What is known is distance learning is not an adequate substitute for in-person instruction. And there is no evidence-based reason against implementing a normal scheduled in-person instruction for the upcoming school year. We believe the best interest of our children can only be served by a return to a normal school schedule the upcoming year. Again, thank you for being able to speak today.
Thank you, Mr. Wilder. Next, we have speaker one seventy-three, Sarah Moot. Sarah Moot. Okay, um, speaker one seventy-four, Harik. I don't have a last, uh, another, a certain last name. Go ahead, Harik. Uh, we did not hear you, Harik. I do see you're online and unmuted. Okay, um. Perhaps there's an audio issue, um. If you're able to call in, uh, I will come back to you as soon as you're able to, as soon as we can hear you. Um, just please raise your hand when you're back. Okay. Speaker one seventy-five, Maryam Akavan. Speaker. One seventy-six, Emily Smith. Speaker one seventy-seven, Burke T. Bayen. Speaker one seventy-eight, Tama Ruth. Okay. Speaker one seventy-nine, Charlene Wild. Speaker one eight, speaker one eighty, Brian Deng. Speaker one eighty-one. Ruth Metzl. Speaker one eighty-two, Rebecca Davis. Alright, I see, Parik, I see you are, you have your hand raised, um, we can try one more time. Please go ahead.
I hope you can hear me, please let me.
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, so first I want to start by saying thank you for creating this, um, opportunity, for giving opportunity to listen to the communities and teacher. And, uh, I was listening to the session yesterday, and I want to say that I totally agree with speaker number forty-seven and fifty. I want to start saying that I was very disappointed with online education that was provided by F C P S in, uh, in, in spring. F C P S is one of the biggest and largest school districts i- in United States. It is, um. It is time for us to invest in the robust online education infrastructure. We have seen our, uh, other jurisdiction around the, around, around Fairfax County who migrated to the online education very easily. Again, I would say it is our time to learn from the mistakes that F C P S has made, and learn from other people's success on providing online education. I know F C P S is pro, uh, has been providing online education during summers. Why can't we learn from that? Second, I think that, uh, our students, especially my kids, were not given opportunity to learn in spring. It was more of, uh, information sharing than teaching and learning sessions. I want to say F C P S should consider giving some kind of one-on-one, one-on-one time with kids during summer to prepare them for the next school year grade. My son will be attending middle school next year, and I don't think he is prepared for the challenges and, and opportunities that will be available in middle school. Uh, um, again, the school, um, the plan that school has, uh, F C P S has created about reopening does not take any consideration of the size of the building. There are schools and high schools and middle schools in F C P S that are combined, and there are five, five thousand students in one building. How, how the kids will be able to do the social distancing in that huge building, even if we open twenty-five percent or fifty percent capacity? I think. F C P S should not consider opening school without there is a viable vaccine for all of the, uh, everyone of, in the school districts. Do the right thing for our teachers. Teachers have done a really good job with no infrastructure on online education in spring. Give them, give them chance to take, to decide between, between their lives and their family lives versus education. Plan to return to school was not cohesive, and it did not consider in, uh, the age, different age level in the school, in this plan. The kids six, seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Invest in the robust infrastructure.
Thank you, Parik, appreciate, thank you. Um, we have speaker one eighty-three, Jennifer Hood.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I strongly feel that F C P S does not have the abilities to successfully execute one hundred percent distant learning on their own creation. The proof is in the pudding of what just happened. I, among many parents, have lost faith in the administration. The goal of complete education has been lost by F C P S. Fairfax County is in the top range of Virginia's best school districts, but that is not being demonstrated in distance education. My high schooler at West Springfield High School did not get quality education for the distance learning, especially at only two days per week with a compressed program. My now-seventh grader's curriculum in his elementary school this past school year was a debacle at best and a waste of his time. I am deeply concerned that all tactile learning must take place in the schools. The high school students have many core subjects that are hands-on, as foreign language, chemistry, and laboratory scientists, um, sciences, C T E subjects, driver's education, calculus, and geometry. By not giving them the hands-on opportunity, Fairfax County is doing them a disservice in preparation for the next grade, A C T testing, S A Ts, college, or career. Hands-on learning can only take place by doing. And it can be done safely with a reduced attendance each day with a rotation of two days in school and two days of distance learning at home with a full schedule to enforce what was covered in class at the start of the school year to move to a full five days physically in class for the second semester. These are all necessities for graduation and success. The middle schoolers need just as much hands-on as high school. They require in-person engagement during these critical years. I see this in my middle schooler, who will be attending Irving Middle School this fall. Attending school in person, wearing masks, and social distancing with high personal hygiene will enable the students to be held accountable, interact with struck, uh, instructors and peers. Fairfax County needs to look at what systems work in other countries and counties. This can work if F C P S gives it one hundred and ten percent for the sake of these students and their careers. I sincerely hope that Fairfax County rises to the task of providing the hands-on education they need, as they had been previously failed by their education system. They are our future, and they need our full education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have speaker one eighty-four, Alessandra Androvich. Speaker one eighty-five, Amila Hetiarchi. Speaker one eighty-six, Tarequl Khan. Speaker one. I don't have a one eighty-seven here, I have a one eighty-eight, Alicia King. Speaker one ninety, Darla Iceman.
Good morning.
Good morning, please go ahead.
My feelings, uh, are best summarized by, um, a petition that is going around, um, for the governor. Um, that was written by a healthcare professional. I feel like we should use the common sense of healthcare professionals in that data when making the decisions to open the school. Um, in, in, in short, they said the Virginia health systems are ready. Hospitals are operating at significant losses due to low u- levels of utilization. So one of the reasons we wanted to flatten the curve was to make sure our hospitals were prepared, and they are. Kids are low-risk, and keeping schools closed has not been shown to save lives. Data around the world shows that this virus is less deadly than influenza to children, and it is unlikely that pediatric centers will ever be overrun. Furthermore, multiple studies indicate that kids are rarely the ones who spread this virus. Children should not be forced to bear the burden of quarantine when it does not benefit them or society as whole. Online instruction cannot replace classroom experiences. Even the best classes via virtual platforms cannot develop the social skills and grow friendships that children need. They already suffer from too much screen time. Sports and after-school activities alleviate depression and anxiety, and we can persevere, this, we can preserve the safety of higher-risk adults while children participate. Children learn academics and social skills best in regular active, in regular classroom settings. School closures, and this is probably one that I keep going back to personally. School closures exasperate already existing inequalities. Children with socioeconomic disadvantages suffer disproportionately during remote learning. Some schools or homes do not have computers or adequate resources for learning. Schools provide mills and safe spaces to add risks to children. And I will say that I've been very impressed by the school system as they've delivered mills during this time. Um, but that's still not going as far, far enough as far as their education is concerned. Many parents and guardians just cannot work and homeschool. We, actually, we're a two, uh, a two, two-parent family that who both work full-time. Um, and it's, it was hard, um, given the difficulties we had during the, the online learning, um, that we had the last of the school. Um, schools offer safe and steady childcare. Few schools and families can realistically support a model of alternate days or small class sizes, which are changes that disrupt learning and are unlikely to meaningfully decrease infection spread. Guardians who must work cannot manage which, which child is at home at which time, as many older children care for younger siblings. Safety modifications can be made while having before return to the majority of students. Children who are deemed high-risk or who reside with high-risk individuals may need to homeschool or have modified school schedules. Staff, protective equipment, and often for all friend and work environments.
Thank you, Ms. Iceman. Um, next, we have speaker one ninety-one, Dorsa Schubert. Speaker one ninety-two, Lee Su. I see that Mr. Su may, may have just dropped out, um.
Bye-bye.
As soon as he comes back, we may be able to come back to him. Speaker one ninety-four, John Meng. Speaker one ninety-seven, Aisha Ali. Speaker one ninety-eight, Michelle Larson. Speaker two hundred, Hum Ak. Speaker two hundred and one, Asra Narmani. Speaker two oh two, Sandy Ibrahim. Speaker two oh three, Genevieve Lenz.
Hello. Hi, I'm Genevieve Lenz, thank you for having me today. Um, I think it's important to say thanks to everyone that's been speaking today and realize that we have a dichotomy of different opinions on today's call. Um, I wanted to share my screen with you because I put together some slides, but I don't think that's a capability that we have, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, um, so I will be reading from some slides from some information that I've gathered. Um, I realize that we live in an area that is one of the largest in the entire country, but we have a lot of resources here, uh, seeing that we're considered the east coast hub of the tech world. And we should really be looking at the parents and those industries that are surrounding us like Google and Amazon to support what this school system is going to need. Um, I'm feeling that there's a need for those of us that have healthy children, that don't feel that this, uh, situation is as grave as, uh, the CDC would have us believe, uh, the N I H, the W H O. There's a lot of resources out there that back why children need to be in school, the health of our children being compromised by being in front of screens at home without socialization. And if you look at how Denmark and you look at a lot of the other countries are handling it, Switzerland, Norway, even China, you'll see that they are putting students back in school, they are doing temperature checks. There is a way to tap into all these resources that these other countries are already utilizing and make it work for Fairfax County. Um, we have not fully explored the resources that we have, including the gymnasium, including outdoor space, including using cafeterias to help do some social distancing with our children, and I do believe that that can be set up. On the flip side, there are families that don't feel that that's right for them. And there should be a, a group of teachers, maybe teachers that don't feel that it's right for them to return to in-person learning, um, that we can actually create something where the guidelines for the in-school are already set for students that feel that it's safe to return and parents that believe that strongly, and, and students being back in school. Um, we know that the students, uh, being outdoors and being spread, you know, six feet apart, uh, it will transmission, but what we're seeing here, and I'm getting confused here because I'm looking at my slides, I apologize. Um, there is a greater need for students to be in school and have the online, have the classroom, uh, teaching be with their teachers and their students, and there, there is a safety risk, um, and that's the point I wanted to get across. If we take some teachers that don't feel that it's safe to be back in school and we say they're going to do the online, uh, teaching, then that's an option that we should have for the students and the teachers that are coming from a household where they're not well, or there's immunocompromization, or whatever the reason may be. But I do believe this county is large enough and has the backing to do both, right? And then we'll be able to have minimum class size. I think, if I'm, sorry.
Thank you. Um, next we'll have speaker two oh four, Leah Tompkins.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, and a reminder to everyone who's not speaking, kindly mute yourself. Yes, go ahead, um, Mr. Tompkins.
Hi, good morning, my name is Leah Tompkins. Um, I'm the proud dad of an up-and-coming first grader, and frankly, I'm a little tired. The last year, so two camps basically talked past each other. It's because safety is subjective. Some people think it's safe to drive, some people, people think it's safe to fly, some people think. When something is so subjective, public policy has to root itself in data and remove itself from emotion, fear most of all. Let me be blunt, schools need to reopen. If F C P S doesn't reopen, statistically, more kids will die from suicide, from domestic violence, or from accidents that occur while children are left home unattended than ever will die from COVID, which still to this date is not claimed to single child's life in Fairfax County. This is in addition to the permanent emotional and developmental harm being inflicted by kids being isolated. My little girl, she misses her friends. She's gone from loving school to disdaining online school. She shows signs of anxiety, acts out more often, and when multiplied by a hundred thousand, represents as much a public health threat as great as COVID, if not more. For those saying that social distancing and other protective measures can't be maintained in school, you're probably right. But it also doesn't matter, it does not matter. The Fairfax Health Department has estimated that upwards of seven percent of our population of one point one million have or have had COVID, many not even knowing it. People saying that you can do contact tracing and isolation are simply dreaming with those kinds of numbers. The disease is out there and cannot be contained or stopped. And as a reminder to listeners, the purpose of masks, social distancing, and the lockdown was not to stop the disease, which is impossible, but to flatten the curve of hospitalizations. And let me repeat that, hospitalizations, to not overwhelm the health system. If you are healthy or young, you are low-risk, which means you may be infected, but you won't need a doctor. You have even odds of even being completely asymptomatic. That is the good news. Morbidity for those under sixty-five years old is miniscule and tied almost entirely to those with pre-existing conditions and comparable to the regular flu, according to the Fairfax County Health Department's own data. The overwhelming majority of those dying from COVID are in nursing homes and assisted care facilities. I find it disingenuous that in the staff brief on Tuesday that it broke out COVID stats by race, class, and geography. They did not break it up by age. Let me be blunt, the irrational desire to have a hundred percent preserves perceived safety with P P E, testing, et cetera, for all people regardless of risk, will end up killing more people. It will kill people who are at high risk in places like nursing homes and assisted care facilities, who even now are having difficulty getting all the supplies they need. The board administration loved to wave around the flag of equity. Let's talk about equity. If you close the schools, understand that in-person instruction will not cease for all. The children of parents with means will find a way to ensure their kids continue to get in-classroom instruction. Those kids will continue to advance and excel.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Next is speaker two oh five, Sharon Illich. Speaker two oh six, Katrina Buchholz. Speaker two oh seven, Sonia Arellano.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
And I'm visible, okay. In one second. Good morning, F C P S school board, F C P S leaders and community, and community members. Mi nombre es Sonia Arellano, como madre de dos estudiantes en F C P S. Mother, educadora, educator, y una voz representando a la comunidad hispanohablante e indígena. And as a voice representing the Spanish and indigenous communities in F C P S, quiero primeramente darle las gracias por todo lo que han hecho por nuestros estudiantes y familias. I want to thank you for everything that you've done for our families and students. At the same time, there is much work to be done to equitably support and include At the same time, there is much work to be done to equitably support and include our families and students in the education process. The first point that I would like to address with the board and its leaders is where's the Spanish or, excuse me, where's the Spanish or other language version of the return to school plan? It's not on the website. Are we not leaving over 31,000 families who have a correspondence of lang, excuse me, a correspondence language of Spanish out? Do we not have a legal obligation, an ethical one? Should we not be providing our familias an opportunity to understand, comment, and participate in such important decisions that impact their children and the lives, their lives and education? When we do provide translations, and it's not on a bracket in our plan, las traducciones no significan acceso a la información. Translations do not equal access to information. And FCPS translations are embedded in English emails and English content on our website. We need to provide our familias información in a language, format, and platform they can access. As educators, we know that a one-size-fits-all approach does not work. I ask you to rethink and to add plans to the plan, formats, venues, to reach our speaking families and other language minority families. In addition, I request that you fund platforms like Talking Points and to fully fund Language United to support translations between families and school staff. The next point that I would like to address is tech literacy. The county has gone above and beyond to ensure that all students have access to technology. However, having technology does not mean that students and families know how to use it. Este fin de curso ha sido testigo desde muchas familias estudiantes que no han sabido usar la tecnología apropiadamente y ha frustrado sus posibilidades de aprender. I have heard from parents and students who have expressed frustration at not being able to navigate the required platforms as this was their first time interfacing with technology. I heard from Maria, a mother of a high schooler and third grader, who cried over the phone that she did not understand the computer and its platforms, and her kids did not access instruction this semester. Brando, age 11, he was scared and frustrated, and he was very worried that his teacher would be angry. He communicated with his teacher via text. It is essential that the school board include in its return to plan training for our parents and students starting this August and throughout the year. On behalf of our familias, I ask the board to consider an end-of-year funding for such initiative. The achievement of our most vulnerable students is widening. Our Latino families are here, we're present. Please consider us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arrellano. Next, we have Speaker 208, Katina Hadichsky. For those speakers who were before 208 but were not present when they were called, we will come back to you at the end of the roster. Speaker 209, George Williams. Speaker 210, Tara Zeller. I see your mic is on.
My children in elementary, middle, and high school participated in distance learning this past spring. I can unequivocally sail, say that it is inferior to in-person learning, and accordingly submit to FCPS that you go back to in-person learning to the maximum extent possible this fall. I have the following seven points. First, thank you to the teachers. You always go above and beyond, and that was never more evident than this past spring. Second, even the best distance learning cannot match in-person learning from an educational standpoint. All children, our children need to have back-and-forth exchanges with their teachers and peers to grow educationally. As an example, look at this meeting here. We can't have a back-and-forth exchange in this forum. We can't express empathy to other parents and staff. The one-way communication stunts our children's ability to share and grow in thoughts and ideas. Third, too many distractions with distance learning. It doesn't engage first graders, and the older kids are on split screens, watching movies, texting their friends with no adult in the room. Fourth, in-person interaction is important for our children's mental health. The connections are perhaps even more important than the educational standpoint in school. Fifth, the numbers of how COVID-19 affects children do not support the decision to go to 100% distance learning. Generally, the data shows children are not high-risk. Now, this doesn't mean we're insensitive to those who are high-risk and can't come back to school, students and parents. But it does mean we should give the opportunity to send some parents of their children to school for in-person learning. At Monday's meeting, Dr. Brayband didn't have the numbers for what students and teachers would opt out if we were to return in-person learning. If you don't have these numbers, how can you develop a plan? Six, I request that Dr. Brayband and each school board member tell us what your ultimate goal is with distance learning. As Speaker 115 said, what is your benchmark to return to school? If your goal is zero infections or an effective vaccine, then we're not going back anytime soon. Is your goal to ever return to the way it was before? You need to clarify this. Specifically, school board member Melanie Marin said in an email, "I am hopeful that we will transform aspects of how we educate students that more profoundly use distance learning technologies." What does Ms. Marin mean when she says she hopes to transform how we educate students? If you plan to transform our schools, then as a taxpayer, I request that we reevaluate the school budget and the $1.235 billion we spent over the last seven years to build and renovate schools based on our understanding of in-person learning. We have serious concerns as parents what your long-term plan is to school. Please confirm that your ultimate goal is to return to school in person five days a week and what the benchmark is for returning. How are we discussing if we return and not discussing when? Seven, I volunteered through the FCPS mentor program. I asked my mentee, what his seventh grade brother was doing for school. He laughed and said, quote, "Just playing Fortnite and Eden." If you don't get these children back in school, you will lose them forever. At the same time, it concerns me that our children suggest home being back, come to the pride group. Almost pride group to learn access to education for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zeller.
Thank you.
Speaker 211, Christiane Ziznowicz. Speaker 212, Joanna Sandoval. Speaker 213, Stephen Tep.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Tep. My wife and I have three children in FCPS, a rising junior, a rising freshman, both at Madison, and a sixth grader, a rising sixth grader at Louise Archer, all of whom started FCPS in kindergarten. My comments today are designed to help you navigate the competing interests and viewpoints you're hearing. As a family with two working parents, the scheduling challenges of disrupted school schedules affect us directly. However, even under the most hopeful of the options before you, our kids will only be in school two days a week and likely not the same two days for each of them. While none of us can know exactly what the virus situation will be in two or three months, the spikes we're seeing in other states even now demonstrate the inadvisability of returning to a full five-day in-person schedule in the fall. Statistics about children and the virus overlook the health risks to the staff and through them, the greater population. Simply put, it is highly unlikely it will be possible to maintain reasonable health precautions and also avoid schedule disruption in the foreseeable circumstances this fall. The question then is which of the options before you is best for the students? While in-person, in-person instruction is preferable to distance learning on a one-for-one comparison, that is not what the options present. Scenarios two and three have students in the building for only one or two days a week, but with no synchronous distance learning to complement that. Those options are inferior to four days a week of synchronous distance learning if the distance learning is properly framed and executed. Despite the best efforts of many dedicated teachers, this past spring FCPS did not match the high standard to which we've become accustomed. What can we do differently to make it work better? The many weeks that were devoid of synchronous learning resulted in students disengaging from school and learning. And when we finally did get started, the severely limited amount of synchronous learning time each week, combined with grading policies that were implemented, meant only the most diligent students remained engaged, and only the most dedicated and creative teachers could succeed in teaching new material. This has soured many on the prospect of distance learning in the fall. I am an educator, although not affiliated with FCPS, and I understand the challenges. I also know this can work better. We need a synchronous distance learning plan that will give FCPS teachers and students a chance to succeed. It must be vibrant, more closely approximating a full school day rather than what the plan before you envisions, especially if it will be limited to four days a week. FCPS must present it confidently from the moment it is announced, and students must be held accountable through regular assessments. It may be challenging for our teachers, but creative, oops, but creative use of commonplace digital tools can bring the digital classroom to life. If you do choose to open schools for in-person education, I urge you to be more protective than the approach Dr. Braybrand has put forward of only closing individual schools if confirmed cases develop. That is closing the barn door after the horse has ever ate. Finally, there must be improved transparency from Dr. Braybrand, so parents can understand the details of the challenges and decisions coming out of his office.
Thank you, Mr. Tep. Speaker 215, Jordan Gillick. Speaker 216, Greta Joines. Speaker 217, Robert Jones. Speaker 218, Marina Hoffman. Speaker 219, Angelica Samudio. Speaker 220, Bettina Poyer.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board today on the reopening plans. My name is Bettina Poyer, and I'm the mother of a rising junior in the IB program at Robinson Secondary. I'm also a law professor at American University and have obtained a COVID accommodation where I teach because we are a vulnerable family. My family, like others, faces a high risk of severe coronavirus complications, and we want to be sure the safety and educational needs of families like ours are expressly reflected in the reopening plan. Unfortunately, major concerns are not addressed in the current options. I will briefly summarize some of the serious gaps in the proposed options. First, there is currently no specific online option offered to families of FCPS students that are at high risk for severe coronavirus complications, including death. Only vulnerable students have an option. All in a family will suffer irreparable harm if a child is exposed and brings the coronavirus home and infects an at-risk family. When people say transmission is less with children, so it's an acceptable risk, I think, wait, you are talking about a risk to my family and many others. In addition, the online options should be in sync with the current curriculum. Recorded FCPS classes or streaming video for one to two days a week, if that would be the plan, and probably it should be more, should be incorporated into distance learning if in-person classes return on those days. All students could then have access to the same educational resources. They could participate in the virtual learning component together. Classes were recorded this spring in distance learning, and this is a critical part of the option. Proposed online options like Virtual Virginia do not provide students with a comparable education to the IB or Honors Program at FCPS, requiring a commitment to a lower-quality online option that undermines future educational plans for high-performing students, unfairly deprived students of the education available to their peers. A commitment to this life-altering option apparently must be made by July 10. Before there is a vaccine or effective therapy, it is clear vulnerable families are at risk of severe illness and even death if there is a return to in-person classes. If vulnerable families are forced to risk their health due to substandard virtual options and send their children back in person to classes, at the very least, real-world conditions must be factored into the safety measures plan. On safety measures, CDC emphasizes strict social distancing, and they also acknowledge spending long periods of time in poorly ventilated rooms makes masks even more important. Those are the conditions in many of our classrooms. Masks and distancing together are safer and recommended by CDC under these conditions. And if masks are not required, then those that wear masks may also be subjected to bullying by those who reject them. Why, why wouldn't in-person learning with strong safety measures be reserved as an option for those who need it most, special needs students, very young children, or English-language learners, for example? Wouldn't a smaller group be easier to protect at school? In conclusion, please remember, if we sacrifice safety in this very limited return-to-school program, we gain little for education for what may be a short or medium-term debt and may directly harm members of our community.
Thank you.
The voice of the community and including its members matters and is essential to stay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 221, Tanya Anderson. Speaker 222, Ivana Escobar. Speaker 223, Erin Hernandez. Speaker 225, Denise Goat.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the reopening plans for our school system. I truly appreciate the time and effort given by so many to develop these plans and to provide the best school year possible for all. I recognize that there is no perfect solution in these uncertain times we find ourselves. I am speaking to you today as a 28-year veteran elementary school teacher, all in Fairfax County. I am very proud of that. This fall, I will teach first grade, six- and seven-year-olds. When I imagine my students sitting at desks or tables six feet apart, the classroom becomes a cold and sterile environment. They will not be able to see me smiling and encouraging them because of the mask or the shield that I wear. I will not be able to give them a hug or a high five spontaneously. Partner work or collaboration with classmates would be absolutely forbidden. Remember your experience of storytime, sitting together on the rug to read stories together? That would disappear. No cozy book corner, no learning centers for hands-on learning, no lunchtime in the cafeteria to sit next to a new friend, recess, all by yourself? So many things that make school so much fun and allow children to build relationships would not happen. The students would quickly learn that school is not a safe place to be and that they must separate themselves from others because they could get sick. How does that support social and emotional well-being? As a foreign, unfriendly place, school equals fear. Trauma on a daily basis does not encourage a lifelong love of learning. Distance learning from home is not ideal, but most children would feel safer there as they learn. There is still so much we do not know about this virus. We are still in the middle of a global pandemic, not at the end of it. Until there is a vaccine or a successful treatment for COVID, we are in danger of contracting a serious illness. It is not worth the health and safety of a student or teacher to open schools. Although distance learning was challenging, we were able to make it work. Teachers would bring that experience along with the voluntary training we are doing this summer to further equip ourselves, to make it a better experience for all of our students. Since there is no perfect solution to the debate about reopening schools, we absolutely must go with the safer solution. Distance learning should continue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Speaker 226, Andrew Watson.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you kindly, and I appreciate the pace of this morning's session. It is extremely improved over last night's, which I did watch and listen to in its entirety to take in as much feedback as I can. Hearing all of the comments up to date and, and taking in as much information as available, I must say, the bottom line, our society is ready to reopen. We cannot give in to fear. Fear is driving us apart, and fear is making people become crippled inside their own selves and minds as to the possibilities for our society. As previous presenter was very articulate in saying, social and emotional well-being and health are extremely important. We will not be able to get to a place where we can have that social and emotional well-being until we do return to normalcy. And I believe it is possible, I think it is possible, and I hope it is possible. That said, virtual distance learning failed. My daughter is now a rising first grader, having just concluded a kindergarten session. It was a total waste of time and resources. I had her attend every session inside the Westfield Pyramid for her elementary curriculum, and it was just abysmal. It did not work. It will not work, and our children will suffer from it. Health and safety issues from COVID-19 remain. It's up to the governor through the CDC and the administration as a whole to set the parameters for it. But I believe Fairfax County Public Schools should flip its mindset and have it focused beyond reopening being the policy. And if families want to opt into distance learning as opposed to in-school, that should be the course that's taken. A third grader or fourth grader earlier yesterday said it better than I could. This child said, "Kids want to go back to school. Kids need to go back to school." Couldn't put it better myself. In addition, a few last points. I want the Blackboard contract with an FCPS audited and released to the public in full. I want to know the signatory lines of the last contract extensions, the renewals that took it into 2021, and why Fairfax County has a top-rate and why Fairfax County has a top-rated system failed in implementing distance learning within the first four to six weeks. And speaking of county resources, we face a social equity problem in this country, yes we do. But if we devote resources to things like school renaming and other types of hearings as opposed to PPE sanitation and opening up school, we'll never make all the resources available to everyone. This hat represents making Fairfax County great again for all citizens and people, regardless of race, religion, creed, color, or identity. Inclusion for everyone. Make America and Fairfax County great again. Thank you kindly.
Next, we have speaker two twenty-seven, Deidra McCannon. Speaker two twenty-eight, Awo Gray. Speaker two twenty-nine, Chelsea Harab. Speaker two thirty, Jeff Green.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the hearing today. Can you hear me? Am I doing okay?
You're good.
Okay, good. So I have three children in FCPS. I have, you know, a rising 10th grader at Madison, a rising 8th grader at Kilmer, and a rising 4th grader at Wolf Trap. So we're very busy with FCPS. We've been with FCPS all the way from the beginning with all our children. Look, this is a very difficult decision that everybody has to make. I think the notion of striking a balance is probably where this should end up. And that's a very, very difficult decision to make. You can see how heated it is on both sides. We're, you know, we've been a hundred days like the rest of us, or the majority of people in lockdown, trying to do the right thing. And the numbers support it. You know, the numbers were just released for today at nine AM. Fairfax County is down from a thirty-eight or a thirty-nine percent positive rate down below nine percent. Amazing, amazing work. So the upcoming school year is going to be very challenging, but what I want to focus on are activities and after-school activities and very, very difficult decisions that have to be made about making sure that our children can get back to a level of normalcy when it comes to activities. I don't think the county had any choice in the spring but to cancel things. It just was the way the world was. It was a difficult decision. It was difficult to do. Summer also has been very difficult. A lot of activities canceled for children. But if we roll into the fall, where now, here we are potentially, you know, going to be at a below-five-percent positive rate, again, as of today, thirty-five cases in the county, down from one, at one point, a high of five hundred. I think if we turn our back on activities, and not just sports, but also after-school activities for children, again, girl, boy, gay, straight, there's no race, color, or creed, it doesn't matter. These are activities that make Fairfax County strong. So I'm very hopeful that the county can come up with a plan. I know VHSL is the body that's really looking hard. Those are the experts right now, you know, throughout the whole state on what guidelines should be followed, particularly for sports. I think it would be a national news story, another national news story for Fairfax County, if for some reason we opted not to follow that guidance, redirect resources, and choose not to have our children participate in activities. Because Fairfax County drives Virginia. It makes Virginia strong for what we do here and what our children can accomplish. And I think this notion of changing the direction of activities could end up changing the direction of children's lives. Because so many children, you know, me included, need to move on. Let's make the right decision about doing it safely, but let's not turn our back on activities. Thank you very much.
Speaker two thirty-one, Jennifer Smith Bosick.
Hi, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. I submitted my comments in an email yesterday, but I'll read them again here. I am the mom of a rising 3rd grader. One solution for the 2020 through 2021 school year won't fit all children, all families, and all grades. And I would like it if Fairfax County Public Schools could include an online option, online-only option for some students. This might help Fairfax County by reducing the number of students who have to be present in a school building. I think if we do this, parents should be allowed to select online-only studies at their discretion without having to prove that their student or family member suffers from a predetermined list of COVID-19 risk factors. Also, if you have this only, online-only option, I would like it if you could please extend it for at least two quarters, but preferably a whole school year. Our family plans to have our son attend online-only school until there's a vaccine. Whether this is through Fairfax County or a different online private school is really just, it'll be determined based on Fairfax County's availability of online school. But I would prefer my student not have to repeat coursework with an online private school if Fairfax County forces students to return to the school building midway through a semester. I understand a lot of families have challenges attending school online, but a lot of families, it works for them. And I've heard other people talk about bad internet connections, between the risk of having a bad internet connection and the risk of a COVID-19 infection for my young student or any member of my family. I'd prefer to risk the bad internet connection. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have two thirty-two, Denna Sanabour.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I am the parent of three FCPS students, one who just graduated. But the one that I would like to talk to you about today is my youngest, who is a 10-year-old with multiple severe disabilities currently placed at the Key Center. Children like my son at Key and Kilmer Center represent a very small portion of the students in FCPS, only about 150 at the most of 180,000 students. However, they have the most significant educational needs, and I don't see them or their needs represented in any of the working return-to-school documents. These children cannot be serviced via a distance learning model. These children have behavioral intervention plans that require intensive one-to-one support from specialists to provide for any progress on IEP goals. And this cannot be addressed in a consult and distance learning model. For example, my son has severe self-injury that has resulted in multiple hospitalizations. It is still a problem even after six years at VIP and an eighteen-month private placement in a more restrictive learning environment. By the way, at a very significant cost to FCPS for those private placements. Implementing my son's VIP is essential in order for him to make any progress on his IEP goals. A VIP cannot be implemented over a computer, particularly not in a consult-only model. This is just one example. Most of the students at Key and Kilmer Centers are nonverbal and lack functional communication. Most have severe intellectual disabilities. My son functions at approximately the level of a two-year-old. These students require small-group specialized instruction, OT, PT, speech, adapted PE, and ATS services, just to name a few. All of these services have now been replaced with a thirty-minute session online with their special ed teacher, and everything else is consult-only. The governor's Phase One opening allows for these students to receive in-person instruction now. I would like the board to consider providing some in-person extended school year in accordance with the governor's guidance. Students in severe, multiple disability, and behavior transition classes are already in a class of three to four students at the most and on buses with four to six students maximum, so they already meet all social distancing requirements. I would also like to stress that the students at the Key and Kilmer Centers must have the option for an in-person, on-time start this fall. In fact, the current hospitalization rate in Fairfax County for COVID is, for pediatric, is six per 100,000. The hospitalization rate for this last flu season was 138 per 100,000. Prior to our school's closure on March thirteenth, there had been three pediatric deaths from the flu in Northern Virginia. All of the clusters for flu are related to school, and we have not shut the school down.
Thank you. Speaker two thirty-three, Tammy Sumner.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Tammy Sumner, and I am the parent of a rising 2nd grader and rising kindergartner. My remarks are from the perspective of a parent who would like the kids to return to school full-time, in-school learning as quickly as possible. Our children miss their friends, they miss their activities, they want things to return to normal or as close to normal as we can get. I recognize that in-school experience will be different and has its own challenges, but we are balancing the risks of the virus against the adverse social, mental, and educational impacts of the isolation and the virtual learning environment on our children. Every family should have the opportunity to make the decision that is best for them. For my family, being in school as much as possible is the best option for my children's social development and mental well-being. It is evident there are many parents who are uncomfortable with any in-school learning. I hope the board is able to revisit the plans and find a way to offer the opt-out option to all families. If enough families opt out, it may even allow the remaining students to scale up to a five-days-a-week that much faster. If the best option we have for now is fifty percent, then I hope the board will proceed with the fifty percent plan. Any plan that has kids in school part-time will be disruptive on the parents' schedules. I offer these suggestions on steps that could be taken to help reduce the disruption and improve the learning experience for our children. Parents should be given the opportunity to express a preference for the days of the week assigned to their children for in-school learning. They should also be asked if they want siblings assigned to the same day or different days. For me, the worst case would be to have, to take one child to school one day and then take the other child the next day. But other parents may prefer alternating days to allow them to focus on the child that is at home for the asynchronous learning portion. Parents should be given another opportunity to express an opinion on their children's classmates. We have already told our daughter she would generally be with the same set of classmates next year, which includes her best friend. More than anything, she wants to go back to class with her best friend. When I told her she may only be going to school on certain days, her first question was whether her best friend would be going to school on those same days. We were given an option last month to respond if we wanted our child moved out of their current class. I think it is just as important to give us another chance to identify those one to two classmates that we would like to have assigned to the same day as our child. I recognize the school may not be able to accommodate every request, but to the extent they can, it will make a huge difference in the in-school experience for my child. The last point I would like to address is the proposed schedule that has parents being notified on August tenth about the assigned days for our children, leaving only two weeks to put in place appropriate childcare. This will be a significant challenge for both the parents and the childcare providers, who will not be able to assess the need or commit to spots until the August ten deadline. If the board decides on the return-to-school plan by the end of June, why do we need to wait another month and a half before assigning dates to the students? I would ask that the board reconsider moving up the August ten deadline to allow as much time as possible prior to the start of the school year for parents to plan for the new schedule. Thank you very much.
Thank you. A reminder to everybody, please make sure you mute your mic if you are not speaking. Speaker two hundred and thirty-four, Elliot Belkrazner. Speaker two thirty-five, Mikhail Bogdanov. Speaker two thirty-six, Emily Lewis. Speaker two thirty-seven, Kevin Mahoney. Speaker two thirty-eight, Luz Panduro. Speaker two thirty-nine, Vlasylov Marchenko. Speaker two forty, Priscilla Di Stefano. Speaker two forty-one, Olivia Miller. Speaker two forty-two, Colleen San Nicolas Perez. Speaker two forty-three, Christina Riblet. Speaker two forty-four, Giovanna Woodson. Speaker two forty-five, Candace Mooney. Candace Mooney, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear my audio?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to start and say, first, FCPS has yet to perform a plan backed by any real data. No professional organization would ever make a decision of this magnitude without data and a transparent needs analysis. FCPS has nothing to transparently gather data on its distance learning implementation. For four months, FCPS could have regularly surveyed parents, students, teachers, staff, administrators on all aspects of distance learning. So for four months, totally wasted. The survey they just went out was poorly written and will collect no useful data, and for some reason needed to single out the Hispanic, Latino population in question five. All our children deserve an equal education. Why are we singling anyone out? FCPS needs to hire an independent contractor, not a law firm, to conduct a survey for stakeholders, gather data, and prepare a thorough needs analysis and formal report with recommendations based on real data. The superintendent and the school board have proven they do not have the skill set to even recommend or plan to develop training for students, parents, teachers, staff, and administrators. I'm unfortunately not surprised. I could not reach the school board myself for almost a month to ask basic questions. It was only after my delegate Kay Corey could not reach them either that I received the call back. Online learning is not something to jump into for elementary students, especially when there's been no training to parents, students, or teachers. Two months ago to date, I still do not have response to my basic questions. Is Blackboard a sole-source contract? There's a strong appearance and propriety in the procurement violations. I signed an opt-out form for recording my child. Children are being singled out in the recordings, which falls under FERPA protections, but FCPS is denying students and parents their privacy rights under FERPA. FCPS refuses to answer how it's handling the release of PII, personally identifiable information from children during their online classroom sessions. This is very serious. And to touch on that, FCPS refuses to address issues with having virtual visitors in the classroom. You need a visitor's badge to get onto school property, and when I asked how many sex offenders were in FCPS homes and potentially watching these sessions that contain this personally identifiable information, FCPS refused to respond. The response from counsel at FCPS to my questions was, "If you have legal concerns, contact a private attorney." FCPS should be poised to answer parents' questions, not suggest parents need an attorney to ask questions. FCPS has failed. They've had four months to collect data, need to complete a needs analysis, produce recommendations based on data, hire an independent contractor, not a law firm, to gather the data from all stakeholders, conduct the needs analysis, and provide recommendations. In the meantime, there's absolutely no data suggesting that the children should not return to school as normal in the fall. My purpose could be for children to return to school as normal in the fall while this analysis is going on on the side, and for Fairfax County School Systems to also develop a COOP team that takes that data, analyzes it, and continues to run a parallel track through the next school year with select programs that can adapt to the needs of children that do not want to currently attend school in a classroom setting. Thank you.
Next, we have speaker two forty-six, Edwin Solano. Speaker two forty-seven, Glennon Godden. Speaker two forty-eight, Shahid. Speaker two forty-nine, Tamara Hafner. Speaker two fifty-one, Anastasia De Cissio. Miss Omeish.
Hi.
Speaker two forty is available. Yeah, we have, for those speakers who, I'm sorry, Miss De Cissio, one moment.
Okay.
For those speakers who came significantly after their name was called, we will be coming back to those at some point. Okay, it was number two forty, though, so you just did call her. Okay. I'll let Miss De Cissio speak since she's waiting, and we'll follow up. Thank you.
Okay, just really quickly. So my children, I have two children, at Sangster Elementary School. And I'm just, I really so much appreciate all of the points of view. I think, for me, it's clear that there has to be, there have to be multiple pathways, options for parents to engage their children in learning, and I think that that sounds like it's got to come in August. However, I have to speak personally. I had COVID-19. I just started to recover. And I just, I don't know why I have to say this, because it's not really an intellectual perspective, but I need to share how terrifying it is. I don't have underlying conditions. My family did not get sick from me. I was the only one. But you have to understand what it feels like and what it's like to choke. And I'm not saying like coughing or gasping. You're choking for hundreds of hours because the long-term symptoms can be severe. And we are talking about marathon runners who can't walk a mile after three months. So as much as I so respect everyone's thoughtful consideration, I don't know where I would be if I had not had this disease, if I had not had it and had been so terrified of what could happen if I get infected again or if anyone I know becomes infected. I don't know where I would be. I don't know if I would be able to understand why my child could not go to school or, you know, have such strict, limited social distancing protocols. I think that's, I'm sorry, I'm rambling. I just wanted to share that. I just wanted to help that people remember that though people are symptomatic and though your family member might not have gotten it, it is an unpredictable, very vicious virus. And the suffering that you can experience from it is amazing. Mental health for children... Mental health for children, my son, my son's watched me gasp, choking, almost dying for months. So that affected their mental health for sure. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Speaker 252, Chris Vu. Speaker 253, Jennifer Dunn. Speaker 254, Jessica Olivon. Speaker 255, Kristi Senney. Speaker 256, Juan Wen. Speaker 257, Sonia Ariano. Speaker 258, Holly Smith. I see Ms. Smith is online.
Oh, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, sorry, one moment. Okay, good morning, my name is Holly, I'm a proud graduate of SCPS schools. I am currently also a school bus driver for SCPS, as well as a single mother of two young children. I'd like to start with some of my transportation concerns. At the board meeting on Monday, health screening questionnaires were brought up. How do you ensure that these questionnaires have been completed prior to students loading the buses? What do you do if a student has not completed one? We at Transportation have a general rule, no student left behind, and are always advised by dispatch to transport first, let the school know later. It was also brought up at the meeting on Monday that it would be a requirement for school buses to have their windows down. What if there's a thunderstorm? What about days when it starts to get cold enough, students need to wear a coat? What about students in special needs buses who are seatbelt or safety vest required students that cannot wear coats to be properly secured in their seats? What do we do about the children who have a difficult time listening, that take masks off or move to sit with a friend while we're driving? What if a student takes their mask off to have a coughing fit or to vomit on the school bus, which does happen often? There's the inevitable spread of illnesses despite how clean your bus is. My family got strapped five times in a three-month period last spring. Seating one child per seat puts kids less than two feet apart from each other for an extended period of time. Changing bell schedules, how will this affect everyone? Elementary school children will be getting home anywhere from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., and some will be walking home when it's dark outside. Changing the bell schedule adds an extra two-plus hours a day to part-time employees' working days, some of whom, like me, work second jobs to supplement the part-time income that being a bus driver provides. Let's not forget about the fact that school buses are often delayed. Sometimes it's because we need to return a kindergarten student back to school who is not met by a parent or guardian. Sometimes there's traffic, delays will push those return home times even later. As another driver put it last night, "We are the first ones to turn on our lights in the mornings and the last ones at night. Please consider us." There are also many, not only transportation employees, but SCPS employees in general, who have underlying health conditions or are at an age that can be impacted greater by a COVID-19 infection. Despite the capacity restrictions, staff is working each day with different groups of students and still around approximately the same number of students per week, which puts us at greater risk. What does SCPS plan to do if there's an outbreak and drivers or teachers are out sick for multiple weeks, either for themselves or caring for a sick family member? Last year, for my team in Transportation, we had multiple open runs, meaning we had bus routes for our schools with no driver assigned to them due to lack of drivers. As a parent, education, social development, and extracurriculars are critical, but so is health, and health comes first. This is not forever, but this is right now, and we are still in the midst of a pandemic. As an asthmatic employee, I don't feel safe returning to work. As a mother, I would not feel safe sending my asthmatic young children to school either. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Speaker 259, Maria Goalitz Johnson.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to talk today. I'm a proud parent and a veteran teacher of 20-plus years. I want to speak as a teacher. To be clear, the current proposals, both the 25% and the 50%, are asking teachers to come up with a face-to-face curriculum, an online curriculum, both synchronous and asynchronous curriculums with little to no support, either financial or professional. Financially, I've had to provide my own graphics tablet, a separate monitor, headsets, and, as have other teachers, with absolutely no money offered in compensation and apparently none available for the foreseeable future. This optional equipment made my transition to online instruction more efficient, way more engaging, way more effective, so it's really not optional. Think of trying to monitor a chat screen for questions, social interactions, while giving an engaging, interactive presentation with multiple links, audio, video, sources, playing a game while typing, talking, listening, and trying to write with a mouse pad or touchscreen, all on a screen that's six and a half inches by 12 inches wide. Please provide, at a minimum, a second monitor and graphic tablet for teachers for online instruction. Professionally, the county has mentioned several times that they are providing online curriculum resources to teachers. I want to personally inform the board that what has been provided to date is a website with links to the Virginia Department of Education Standards Curricular Guides, already-existing Fairfax extrapolations of the standards of learning, and existing links like the site Discovery Education. These sites and documents have not been changed in years, and the touted new pacing guides, they are a suggested way of reordering topics. It's like changing a table of contents. It's nice to have these in one location, but don't try to sell it as SCPS is providing teachers with anything we haven't had access to for years. SCPS has a huge opportunity to redeem itself with online instruction. To be clear, what happened in the spring was not online instruction, it was panic. Students were told they did not have to participate, their grades could not drop, teachers were only given 45 minutes a week with their students. The county should use the remaining weeks to build a foundation for a robust, challenging, and differentiated online environment for curriculum and social, emotional health of our students and their families. This should include after-school clubs and activities, all that can occur online. We have an unprecedented opportunity to bring together communities using technology like never before. Yes, in-person was what we knew and what we're comfortable with, but the achievement gap would not close, been trying for 50 years. Equality issues and social, emotional problems still flourished. We need to think outside the box and try to see an opportunity here, an opportunity to engage families, not just go back to school night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next, we have Speaker 260, Jennifer Bryant.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk today. I wanted to bring the board, turn the board's attention to the Superintendent's Technology Advisory Council. Looking at the roster, the council is made up of technology industry executives, academics, and a few educators, but what the council seems to be lacking is any parental input. My daughter is a student in the PD program at Falls Church High School. She is cordically blind, hearing impaired, nonverbal, and a quadriplegic. And the 13-inch school laptop was the only tool we were given to help her to access the distance learning program, and it became pretty obvious on the first day out that that was absolutely useless. I was forced to really think outside the box, to look around at the house, and what did we have that I could use to adapt the learning environment to her needs, and ultimately ended up taking two laptops, a 67-inch television, a whiteboard, two adaptive switches, two grown-ups, and an eye-gaze device. And if I had not had access to those things in my household or the money to go out and buy them, she would not have been able to access the distance learning program. And I think that ultimately, the Technology Advisory Board will be able to, on a very broad level, take into consideration children who have multiple disabilities and what it takes for them to be able to access the distance learning environment, but I don't think that they are capable of truly understanding what it takes to allow somebody who is blind, who is nonverbal, to be able to participate in the distance learning environment. So I would ask that the school board, please ask the superintendent to, if not add a parent of a child with multiple learning disabilities to the advisory council, to at least seek out parents like myself who could give them an accurate description of what it takes to address some of these very complex special needs children's requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 261, Mary Louise Kelly. Speaker 262, Sherry.
Can I speak, please? Can I speak? I was 2:40, and I came on right after.
Right, thank you, Ms. Stefano. As I explained, as was done yesterday and as is customary in our public hearings, if someone is called and they don't have the opportunity, they wait until the end of... Yesterday, we did do it at the end of the day, but I will...
So I had issues with the Blackboard, I had issues with my Blackboard link getting on, something that I've known already, Blackboard has issues, I'm surprised you guys have not. So I came on literally right after Ms. Maron pointed that out. The fact that you're refusing to let me speak right now is very uncalled for, I just want my three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Stefano. I did, as I mentioned, explain to others, and we want to make sure it's fair treatment to everybody. Previously, there were people who are waiting now to speak at the end, so I will proceed, but we can, a message offline to figure out a way that works for you as well.
Okay, did everyone listen? This is complete bull crap, but whatever.
Thank you. Speaker 263, Michael Earmarth.
Speaker 264, Leah Ruiz Ramon. Hi, good morning. I am Leah Ruiz Ramon, and it's exciting to talk to all of you today because it's as if you are in my own classroom. I am a second-grade teacher at Ravensworth, and I'm addressing you today on behalf of at-risk teachers to advocate that guaranteed virtual teaching positions are available to us when schools do reopen. I applaud Speaker number 251, a COVID survivor. Thank you for making this virus, this disease, this horrible, wretched disease that we cannot see, but it's all around us, so real for us, because that's what at-risk people experience every day. My life is deeply rooted in Fairfax County, my kids went to school here, I love Fairfax County, and I just need you to know that, first off. I have been a teacher now for 25 years, 17 of which have been with Fairfax County Public Schools. So I'm really used to walking into my classroom each day, it is a Petri dish of germs. So yes, I'm an at-risk individual with diabetes and hypertension, but I'm used to the cleaning routines, okay? So I know what needs to be done to battle the fevers and the vomit and the strep throat, the influenza, and yes, even the norovirus. We have already gone through a scenario at our school with norovirus. It wiped out nearly 40% of our population. We still continued to have school and classes. Our cafeteria, in fact, turned into a triage zone. Nurses were posted out front to take fevers, to ask questions. It didn't work, and it was scarier than I can even express to you. So here we are facing COVID-19, another battle, but this time, I don't feel brave, I no longer feel resilient to a virus that can kill me. It's not a matter of missing two weeks of school for me, and it is not something that is subjective as other parents and people have presented in this forum. It is very clear, I have 12 times the likelihood of dying, I will be six times more likely to be put into a hospital. So I speak on behalf of those people with pre-existing conditions like mine, we should not have to potentially face death each day. Now, I'm raising this because in one of the scenarios, it said, well, one of the options should be then take a leave of absence if this doesn't work for you. But we financially can't do that. It is almost like being punished for having a genetic defect. What it means is basically you losing an entire year of salary and then incurring a $26,000 debt because we cover our portion of health insurance as well as Fairfax County's contribution. So this cannot continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruiz. Next is Speaker 265, Megan Gross. Speaker 266, Jennifer Elder.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to, for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm the parent of middle school and high school students. I think you heard from several high school students yesterday talking about their lack of motivation and the negative effects of isolation on their mental health. I'm a supporter of Scenario 2, 25% school-based learning. I think it strikes the right balance of limited risk for students while providing them with real accountability in their instruction. I feel strongly that students and teachers should be grouped by grade, with maybe in high school, seniors going one day and teachers being grouped with that group of kids, so that lessons can continue remotely for the other three days of school. I believe specifically teenagers need to have some in-person instruction from their teachers in order to sustain their motivation for an entire school year and be able to see some of their classmates. The long-term effects of constant isolation and only virtual learning, virtual teaching, virtual friendships, virtual counseling, and virtual resources for 15 continuous months is not healthy for teenagers. An email from a counselor saying, "I'm here for you," one more virtual email is just not enough. Two other points that I'd like to make, which is, there needs to be more accountability, not just for the students, but also for the teachers. My high school son had amazing teachers and great assignments. My middle school son had two of seven teachers that taught him, the other five were pretty nonexistent. So I think that some of the learning will absolutely be distanced this year, and the county needs to do a better job of making sure that teachers are accountable for what they are actually teaching the children online. Finally, I hope that the superintendent will consider different types of solutions for high school kids, middle school kids, elementary school kids. What an 11th grade parent might want is not the same as maybe what a third-grade parent might want. And finally, I'd like to say that the school board should consider that there are bars and restaurants all over the county that are open. By the time school starts, theaters, malls are all going to be available for people to go to. I don't see how we can say that we cannot have children in school, and they must stay home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Speaker 267, Elizabeth Tucci. I see she's online. Elizabeth Tucci.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you. I am the parent of a rising sixth grader and rising ninth grader in Fairfax County Public Schools. I urge the county to return to in-school learning at least two days a week, and every day a week, if legally permissible, with masks and other measures in place and remote options for at-risk students and staff. I advocate this because distance learning has failed my family and others, and because the bases for closing schools are scientifically unsound. My kids are both strong students and typical learners. However, despite the best efforts of teachers and my family, they learned little this spring. One of my children had limited success, the other learned virtually no new material, and ended the school year demoralized, discouraged, and alienated. The costs of social isolation are high and pose a mental health threat to our children. Every hour in school with other students and teachers is worth more than the dozens of hours in so-called synchronous learning. I concur with the comments of Mr. Tompkins, Speaker 204. Closing schools does not save lives, and as Europe is learning now, opening schools back up does not cost lives. While social distancing and other measures have slowed the spread of COVID, the science shows that closing schools is not a useful intervention. The Post reported on June 8 that a major study of interventions across the globe found no benefit to closing schools. Iceland itself had a major outbreak. It kept its schools open, it traced every single case, and found not a single case of a child passing COVID to an adult. I hope that Fairfax County staff take comfort in that research. This disease is no more lethal to children than the flu, does not spread easily from children to adults, yet we are treating it as something that science does not support. The cost of not relying on science will be the lost education and the lost mental health of our children. I urge Fairfax County to follow the science and open its doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tucci. Speaker 268, Steve Hatch.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. So thank you for the opportunity to voice our thoughts today. I know we all have differing opinions, but I hope our school board actually takes this feedback into consideration as we together develop the plan forward. First, it is important that we separate truth from the hysteria fed to us by the media. The truth is, as society opens up... The truth is, as society opens up, COVID cases will naturally go up. However, CDC statistics show that children and young people are the least likely to be affected by COVID, both in terms of contracting and spreading the disease. The other fact on stark display is the different standards and acceptance the media and the medical community want us to apply to those protesters, rioters, and looters as it pertains to large gatherings, social distancing, and wearing masks versus those citizens who have had their lives destroyed economically and emotionally due to over-the-top measures put in place by government in the name of health. The second fact is science is not infallible. The models used throughout the, this COVID crisis have been proven completely inaccurate and have been modified downward dramatically on a weekly basis. The data is proving out, the mandated stay-at-home regulations have not stopped the spread nor the deaths from the virus. Another fact is the CDC's annual flu deaths over the past several years have ranged from thirty-four thousand to sixty-one thousand in the U.S. Additionally, the CDC estimates ninety-nine thousand people die each year from infections they get in hospitals. But yet, based on these annual death numbers, we have not shut down our schools, ended sports, or prevented kids or adults from gathering together. Two of my children have medical problems that are exacerbated if they get the flu or a severe fever. My middle child had two strokes at the age of one and a half. Although we receive care from some of the top medical experts in the field, they still do not know what the triggering factor was causing my child to have strokes versus her sister with the same condition. I bring this up to say, understand what parents are going through and waiting, when wanting to protect their children, and in the COVID case, other family members from harm and illness. The benefits of face-to-face school far outweigh the risk across all socioeconomic levels. Other speakers already highlighted how various classifications of children would suffer without direct hands-on instruction, but those impacts apply to all children. The negative emotional and psychological impacts on our children are not just, uh, are now just being written about, not to exclude our children's learning being thwarted. The virtual learning my high school children went through this spring was poorly run, willfully inadequate, with little to no instruction and technologically challenged. I was very disappointed. I feel it's a mistake to wait for a COVID vaccine before opening schools. A viable vaccine could be months to years away, and if it's anything like the flu vaccine, several other strands could develop in the interim that would require even more time to create new vaccines. That logic would say we should have a lockdown forever. The FCPF should offer a virtual online learning for those families and children who want to continue to maintain more isolation, as that is their choice for their families. However, the school board can make some common sense adjustments to our classrooms and social interaction policies so we can open schools. This continued isolation on our children is going to have a long-term impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker two sixty-nine, Laurel Ferrarini. Speaker two seventy, Ines Hill. Speaker two seventy-one, Bridget Thompson, Thompson.
Good morning. I am a chemistry teacher at South Lake High, and I firmly support Fairfax County Public Schools opening at full capacity this. My reasons for this are two-fold. First, it is vital for our students' well-being, and second, our young, healthy students are not part of the at-risk population. Students are motivated and learn more effectively when they are in the school building, where they are given the opportunity to receive professional instruction and immediate feedback. Physically attending school also promotes social and emotional well-being, since students will be observed and taught while. This cannot be achieved through an online delivery system. On the last day of, quote, "class," I had my students reflect on the school year and distance learning through an online tool called Perdeck. When asked, "What are your hopes if distance learning continues?" Some students stated they would like school to be held in the building next year and/or that distance learning is not as engaging, interactive, or organized. In addition, we should continue to dedicate ourselves to teaching portrait-of-a-graduate skills, which can only best be done by being in school. Second, the youth population is not dying from the virus at alarming rates. The CDC states ages zero to seventeen make up only four point eight-three percent of cases. According to findings published in Annals of Internal Medicine by Scripps Research Institute, almost half of the reported cases were asymptomatic. On June eighth, Kirko of the WHO made a statement that, based on evidence thus far, asymptomatic spread of the virus is rare. According to the CDC website, youth ages five to seventeen have been hospitalized between point five to one point four percent from the weeks of March twenty-one to June six. According to a June fifteenth article from Doctors Without Borders, quote, "COVID nineteen is more dangerous for elderly people or people suffering from other infections or ailments." Children so far seem to be less affected by the disease, end quote. All the medical data out there thus far does not support keeping our doors closed when our students risk secondary issues related to not being in school. FCPF's decision should be made based on factual data, not emotion. I look forward to seeing all my students and supporting their educational needs and goals this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Speaker two seventy-two, Southen Musa.
Hi, hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Southen Musa, and I work at McNeer Elementary School. I'm not the best with public speaking, but I'll do my best. Um, I know this decision is really hard. I want to thank everyone. It's, it's very challenging. Everyone's working hard. I've been following, um, um, all the meetings, what, six, seven hours? So everyone's working so hard to get the right decision, but it's really, really very challenging. Um, there's no one solution for sure, and a lot of people share the same thing, that fits all. Um, everyone is from their point of view and the way they look at it, and there's benefit for children, and the majority is talking about kids, and that's all what we care, and this is our job, just children. Um, and at the same time, um, there is a little talk about teachers and staff that work with them. Uh, to be able to care about children, we have to have healthy teachers and, um, healthy, like mentally and emotionally, so they can support. But that way, um, the solution for two days to go back to school, it's not the best. I don't think even it will benefit the students. Um, if it's the five days or just don't go back to school, it's confusing, it's not enough, and also a big risk for teachers and staff to catch the COVID nineteen. A lot of people talk about it, but I'm gonna talk about it from my own point of view, because, um, the statistics said, um, children don't transfer the disease, but I had a friend of ours that his grandson transferred the disease because he was going to daycare and he comes because his mom worked. And our own friend that is like a brother caught it and he died. And it's not the only one that we know. We have family members, all ages, not only sixty and up, not only had risk, they did not have any risk at all, in their forties and their fifties. Lots of physicians, we have lots of, we have big communities, we have lots of friends that they are family to us, and you don't know how much they went through. Some of them, they are survival, some of them died, which breaks my heart. I'm sorry to share this with you, but this is the reality of this disease, that no one knows anything about it yet. I know some, um, we heard some, they said, it's not accurate, anything. Yes, it is not, because scientists still work, I'm trying to figure it out, and so... I would suggest also.
Thank you. Your time is up, unfortunately.
Teachers that they wanna go and parents that they wanna send. Thank you. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for sharing. Uh, Speaker two seventy-three, Jen Jones. Speaker two seventy-four, Toma Dunn. Speaker two seventy-five, Anand Vasudevan. Speaker two seventy-six, Nadine Wright.
I'm here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'm an art teacher for Fairfax County Public Schools. From my twenty-plus years' experience in Fairfax County, the future looks challenging. The teachers and schools are more than willing to partner with Fairfax County to make it all work. Let me address some of the challenges that I see. Challenge number one, it now appears the proposed plan, that teachers will get two times as much exposure to students, but students will only get half as much exposure to other students. Teachers are more at risk for contracting COVID than students. Will we have access to N95 masks? Challenge number two, if FCPF is leaning towards fifty percent capacity, let me lay out the challenge for the proposal. Our actual class sizes are thirty-plus students, bigger than the average. If it allows for fifteen-plus students in my class at one time, then I will need two times as many tables. To abide by social distancing guidelines, I can have one child per table, which allows eight students in my classroom at one time. So twenty-five percent for proper social distancing in my classroom, which typically has thirty to thirty-two students. Challenge number three, advanced cleaning on high-traffic surfaces in classrooms. How will advanced cleaning happen with only one custodian in our school during the day? Would that mean that teachers will now be responsible to clean between every single class? In addition to setting up and preparing for the next class, where is there time for us to use the restroom? Challenge number four, what does social distance look like in reference to supplies? Challenge number five, if students are not going to be in the classroom, where will they be eating and who will clean that up? And then, when will teachers have their protected time for lunch? Challenge number six, if teachers are to be in-school teaching, who will monitor online lessons? When will feedback, follow-up, and keeping up with students, turning in work, happen? Online and in-class learning makes twice as much work for teachers. Challenge seven, how can we really keep kids from staying home who are sick? Challenge eight, what happens if teachers get the virus? Will a substitute, which we already have a shortage of, be told that we are, that they are covering for a teacher who has COVID? If the infected teacher is penalized, will the infected teacher that's penalized have to use their own leave? There is so much around this topic that has not yet been discussed. Last and possibly the most overlooked, as I see it, teachers are being asked to do a lot more. We are and will, we are, excuse me. We were also told that we will not be getting a cost of living increase next year, which is already proving to be a very challenging and complicated year. What kind of compensation or considerations are teachers really being given? Let us not forget that we teachers are more at risk for contracting COVID than students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Speaker two seventy-seven, Leslie Houston. Speaker two seventy-eight, Imran Alim. Speaker two seventy-nine, Erin Ferguson. Speaker two eighty, Megan Gimm. Speaker two eighty-one, Bonnie Sanchez.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great. Um, hi, I have a rising eighth grader and one rising ninth grader, and here's what we've learned from online distance learning these past several months. One is Fairfax County Public Schools need to make sure that they have a good and reliable delivery platform system in place by fall. The failure of the platform at the beginning of this crisis was a huge disappointment to students, parents, and staff. Two, teachers need to be trained and educated on online distance teaching. This COVID nineteen crisis thrust teachers into uncharted waters without the required training that was needed to effectively teach online. Many teachers used varying methods for posting assignments, became disorganized, and simply spoke to students. Now, this is not the teacher's fault, because these are online teaching methods that must be taught to teachers. So during the summer, I hope the board would at least begin to ensure that teachers have the proper support and training for effective online organization and teaching and hold teachers accountable. Three, five to six hours a day of continuous online distance learning, two days a week, was taxing mentally and physically, as I'm sure we're all aware from Zoom meetings from work. So online learning should be a combination of class discussion, videos, and teacher instruction, and should be stretched out three to five days a week for three or four hours at least. With regards to health and safety, I think it's important to note that Fairfax County has over thirteen thousand three hundred confirmed COVID nineteen cases with a population of one million. South Korea, on the other hand, has under twelve thousand five hundred confirmed cases with a population of fifty-one million people. A lot of that variance is due to precautionary measures taken in South Korea. So based on this data, Fairfax County Board should expect that when schools open, whether it's one day a week or five days a week this year or January, that a student or staff member will be infected with COVID nineteen, and that schools will need to be shut down again. So here are some practical and safety questions that I have that I think the board should consider and address. One, should there be a staggered reopening of schools to allow different-sized schools to properly adjust seating arrangements, stagger their student attendance, and institute certain safety measures that are necessary for their specific school? Two, will a school be shut down if a student or staff member becomes infected with COVID nineteen, and will parents be notified? Three, what student contact tracing procedures will the board require schools to have in place if a student or a staff member is infected with COVID nineteen? Four, is there a year or half-year opt-out plan for in-person learning for students who want or need to continue full, remote, online, distance learning? Five, will the board ensure that all classroom desks have plexiglass or plastic dividers in place to minimize risk exposure of the virus to students and teachers in class? And six, will the board require schools to have temperature checkpoints and hand-washing stations in place and to require students and staff to wear masks? We do need to move towards opening schools, but this movement has to be done responsibly and in a diligent manner. Opening all schools all at the same time in August does not allow students to do this in a safe manner. Thank you.
Speaker two eighty-three, Kristin Bunch.
Good morning. Um, thank you for having me. I am a sixth-grade teacher at Colin Powell Elementary School. I am also representing, um, the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers Return to School Task Force this morning. I first want to mention that there has been no survey asking teachers what their actual choice would be next year. There has been no opportunity provided to teachers to indicate that, yes, I wish to return, or no, I want to do distance learning. The superintendent has currently said that the only people who would be given the opportunity to opt for distance learning would be those with an individual underlying condition. Many staff live with people who have underlying conditions, and many staff just do not feel comfortable exposing themselves to this virus. The choices need to be provided to families and staff to decide whether or not we should be able to have a distance learning opportunity for a full year or the, or follow the phased models. Our staff needs to be considered here, and nothing has been asked of us. Moving on to my next consideration that I am asking, there are so many teachers in our county who have elementary-age children. In a phased model, where are they going? Dr. Dale, the superintendent of Virginia Schools, has suggested that all teach, all children of teachers should be allowed to be in school one hundred percent of the time. Our superintendent has not guaranteed that as an option. This needs to be at the forefront of your decision-making, as if teachers are pushed to find daycare or can't afford that, they are going to be forced to resign, which should not happen to us. Sorry, I lost my, lost my place in my writing here. Also, in, in a model where teachers' children would be provided, um, to be in school a hundred percent of the time, it cannot just be, um, what has been flitted around of, let's just stick them in a tent, because that's where they can go and have a substitute look after them. There needs to actually be a structured day in place. On another note, there is so much data indicating another wave of infection is heading our way. I believe that regardless of how we open, we will most likely be forced into a distance learning situation. I would strongly urge our county to start us off at distance learning for the first quarter, start to make plans for this summer, to actually train teachers adequately to promote, to implement instruction that is meaningful, so that if we phase out of that and have to phase back in, teachers are actually prepared for that scenario. I want to also say that, um, the Phase Two model puts so many families in the danger
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Speaker 284, Frederick Landry. Speaker 285, Ally Nickler.
Hi. Can you see me now?
Yeah, please go ahead.
I have a rising kindergartner this fall, and I've been disappointed that reopening considerations ignored the input of an entire grade. When schools closed in March, it was to flatten the curve, not to find a vaccine or eradicate a virus. The curve is flattened, our hospitals are fine, our schools need to open. Finding a vaccine isn't the answer, that doesn't account for manufacturing and distribution, which could easily take two years. In a state of nearly 8.5 million people, less than 370 people under the age of 70 have died from COVID. That age would cover students, most parents, staff, faculty, and teachers. 370 people. The rest of my comments will be specifically related to young children. Why is there no distinction of a reopening that may look different for different ages? The learning abilities and childcare needs of a five-year-old and 15-year-old are not the same. As many have said, the options need to be full-time, in-person learning or distance learning for medical need or personal comfort. Let's look at the alternating schedule. Young children need structure and predictability. A schedule that has them alternating each day will throw them into greater anxiety and emotional turmoil. And how, as new kindergarteners, will they build any relationship or bond with their teachers or classmates? Not to mention, this in no way works for working parents. When teachers voice childcare concerns on Monday, there is empathy and talk of expanding SAC. Where is this empathy for every other working parent in this county? Our schools are not a co-op, and parents are not teachers. The best plan you've provided maxes out a parent's ability to work at 20 hours. 20, half of full-time. And this assumes my five-year-old will sit at the computer, listen to videos of a teacher he's barely met, and doesn't need encouragement or aid. How is our society to function if every parent's ability to work has been cut in half? Pay cuts and layoffs will continue, causing higher unemployment, greater family stress, increased food insecurity, and the list goes on. I would remind you that my ability to lead my child through your three days at home is because I'm lucky to have a flexible job. But my company has already said that in September, we are expected back in the office. Our children have suffered for months, communities have suffered for months, and the suffering needs to end. They've missed bringing birthday treats to class, they've missed playing with their friends, goofing around, and being kids. My child has been looking forward to kindergarten for months. The elementary school is in our neighborhood, and we often drive by, and he's already calling it his school. When his preschool closed briefly in March, I reiterate briefly, for less than three weeks, my child was so upset about the possibility of not going to kindergarten that he was in tears. We had to bring him to the school because he literally thought the building was gone. And reassure him that he would be able to go to kindergarten in the fall. You are now choosing an option that will force my husband and I to break his heart and tell him to not go to kindergarten, because you can only offer a 40% plan. 40% is failing, and it's unacceptable.
Thank you, Ms. Nickler. Next, I have Speaker 286, Becky Pascal. Speaker 287, Noel Goldberg. Speaker 288, Carol Ellenberg. Speaker 289, Teges Tisfaye. I see Ms. Tisfaye is online.
Hi, can you see me?
I can hear you, I can't see you.
Okay. I don't know why, but okay, that's fine. I am a parent of a rising ninth grader and a rising senior. Thank you for providing the opportunity to hear from parents on the return to the school plan. I understand that there is no perfect solution with so much unknown. So thanks for your effort trying to do the best. With that, I say FCPS needs to reopen with the maximum percentage possible for many reasons that have already been expressed. More than anything, as we heard just with Speaker 285, who spoke before me, that students are dying, saying that they are so desperate to go back to school. With this, parents should be given the option to opt out from in-person and provide the other virtual options. The 25% students-in-school option just provides one day in school to cramp all subjects in that one day, which may be maximum of 30 minutes per subject, which also means taking away the other three days of synchronous learning, direct virtual instruction, as the teacher will be occupied teaching students of about eight to nine students in the class for the four days. This is the worst choice, as it takes 80% of direct instruction or contact with the teacher, and is not worth spending the money or taking any risks, especially for teachers being in school for four days just to provide a student about 30 minutes of direct teaching in a week. If FCPS cannot bring the students at least two days, which is 50% of students in the school building, then the better option would be to do 100% virtual synchronous instruction, which will at least provide direct instruction, in contact with teachers virtually, in contact with teachers for four days, with one day assigned for teacher planning. Whatever option FCPS goes with finally, it needs to work on enhancing the virtual learning by far, as most likely there's going to be a higher chance that you will need to use it at some point after, with a possibility of the spike. I suggest testing the system ahead, mimicking the real scenario. Virtual learning needs to be engaging students, encouraging and requiring students to participate, not just type responses in chat or listening to PowerPoint presentations from teachers, which was completely disengaging. It should also be done in a way that students also interact with each other. It should try to mimic the in-person scenario as much as possible. The synchronous part needs to be non-digital to give students a break from the long hour of exposure to the computers, as they will already be spending lots of time on their laptop with synchronous. I have complaints about having students.
Thank you, Ms. Tisfaye.
Thank you.
Next, Speaker 290, Brian Dahl. Speaker 291, Hao Peng Wang. I see Hao Peng is online. Speaker 291, Hao Peng Wang. Okay. If there's an audio issue, Speaker 291, we will be able to.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Hao Peng Wang's wife, Yan Lu. He yelled his time to me because he's in a work meeting. So, good morning. My name is Yan Lu, and I'm a mother of three. I have a rising second grader in Flint Hill Elementary in the coming fall, and I also have a four-year-old and a nine-month-old. My parents, my senior parents, live with us. I feel if my second grader goes to school for even one day per week in the fall, there is still a high risk she can bring virus from school back to home and endanger the whole family, kids are kids. It's hard for them to keep social distance whilst they're together. And with the number of COVID-19 cases and death tolls still rising, FCPS should give concerned parents the option to opt kids out of in-person instruction and have the alternative to get online instruction only, regardless of medical need. I believe concerned parents shouldn't be forced to withdraw their kids from school in the fall if they don't want to put whole family at risk and send their kids for maybe even one day to school. And I also want to add that it's only a myth that children and healthy people, healthy young people, are at lower risk from COVID-19. We have seen in the news cases of children, teenagers, and young people in their 20s die in this pandemic. And Broadway star Nick Cordero has his leg amputated after complications from the coronavirus. And so far, I believe the low number of COVID-19 positive cases and death toll in children is due to the already closure of schools and the low exposure of the young children to this pandemic. And let me ask this question: If school reopens, if a parent or family member has a COVID-19 symptom or is tested positive, is this child required to stay at home or tell school? I don't believe so. I think most likely the answer is no, due to privacy reasons and the child displays no symptom. Yet, we already know this is a highly contagious disease, and it's not common flu. People can spread the virus long before they show any symptom. So let's think about this, and with the benefit and cost, before we make a decision of if we want to go back to school or let most people go back to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wang. I will now be transitioning, it is 11:00 a.m., to my colleague, Dr. Riccardi Anderson. A reminder that if you are having audio issues, we can show some patience and flexibility at the moment. But if you are not logged on when your name is called, as is customary for our public hearings, we will be coming back to you at the end of the session. So Dr. Anderson will call on those who were listed before and were not present when their name was called before 1:00 p.m. Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you so much, Ms. Amesh. I will be continuing with Speaker 292, Arista Rollins. Speaker 293, Lisa Davie. Speaker 294, Isabel Otero.
Hello.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to talk and follow that wonderful lady who went on, that mom before me. My name is Isabel Otero. I'm a mother of a rising kindergartner, and also have a public health profession, I have a public health background, and have been working in the federal level for over 15 years in public health. And so I take public health very seriously. And so I'll talk a little bit from there. I first wanted to thank the leadership and everyone really in Virginia, remind folks that we are where we are right now, looking at numbers dropping because of the measures that we took earlier on, the shutdown of social distancing. And so as the board moves forward, this is a tough situation to be in. And, you know, I empathize with you on trying to make decisions on the right path. But, you know, moving forward, continue to be as cautious as you have been, and remember that you are going in the right direction, and continuing to look at evidence, data-driven decision-making, and looking at organizations of public health organizations like the CDC, Hopkins, my alma, Hopkins graduate, alum of Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. And they recently came out with a roadmap to opening schools from K to 12, and looking at what they have to say as you make your decisions. Specifically, one of the pillars for the reopening is to implement new technologies and train teachers and parents on how to make better use of virtual classrooms. You know, unfortunately, I've heard a lot of people now with, you know, parents, uncomfortable teachers. It's a new reality, and I would press, I think, the need to make sure that the board, the school system is putting enough resources to make sure that this is a seamless transition. And with that said, and as a parent, we had to do a virtual for my son's pre-kindergarten. It's a lot, a little more responsibility on the parents, I'll have to say, and I empathize. But I think as a public health professional, it being part of our new reality, I think it's not whether we should be using virtual, but in how to improve it and how to better integrate it. I'll add, in children, I've heard some people with statistics on the low cases among children. That's true, but children are part of the community, as has been already mentioned. And so making sure that we look at children as vectors of transmission, and making sure that we're, you know, with social distancing, the hand washing in the classroom, implementing as well as at home. I'll also add that CDC, the director has mentioned fall will be a tricky fall this year with the flu and the COVID circulating or the SARS-CoV-2.
Thank you, Ms. Otero, for joining us this morning. We appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. Speaker 296, Elaine Well. Speaker 297, Holland Lee. Speaker 298, Artirda Bickford. Speaker 299, William Dar.
Hi, can you hear me properly?
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you. My name is Billy Dar, and I'm a seventh-grade history teacher at Rachel Carson Middle School. Before I begin, I want to thank everyone who has sacrificed to make this community hearing possible. Throughout the past three months, I've desired nothing more than to be back in the classroom. No other experience brings me more joy than teaching, learning, and laughing with colleagues, students, and their family members. While a return to school is appealing because it would bring back these experiences, I believe they are not worth the risk to everyone's health for the short-term benefit of a return to so-called normalcy. If a Phase 2 or Phase 3 reopening occurs during the current circumstances, the extent of interaction required in schools will likely cause increased transmission of COVID-19. According to renowned epidemiologist Michael Osterholm, the strongest data available shows that COVID-19 is primarily the air we breathe. The single greatest risk factor for transmission is exacerbated by loud voices and shouting, specifically when in confined spaces with large groups of people. These conditions are unavoidable in a school environment. Furthermore, the logistics of the social distancing and the enforcement of protective measures outlined in the reopening plans are unrealistic and cannot guarantee protection from the virus. This is because of the probability of asymptomatic transmission of COVID-19. A study by Scripps Research found that between 40% to 45% of carriers may be asymptomatic. Even if FCPS requires every individual entering schools to complete self-assessments of their current health, it is plausible that COVID-19 carriers will slip through this questionable system. Some members of the community have voiced their views that we should not be worried about transmission to children and younger people, and that we should return to school, citing the extended mortality by age group. However, this data only speaks to age-based criteria and ignores the hazard COVID-19 poses to high-risk members of that population. The value of human life should not be based on statistics like this. Age is not the only factor to consider when evaluating risk for COVID-19. I am currently a healthy 28-year-old man, but I am a healthy 28-year-old man with muscular dystrophy. This condition renders my respiratory system especially vulnerable to any illness affecting the lungs. My domestic partner, who has asthma, is also in a high-risk group. Should either of us contract COVID-19, we each have a risk of death 12 times greater than the average person. To that end, I believe teachers and students who are at higher risk should at least be given the opportunity to do distance learning rather than return to school classrooms. I understand the complaints from students and their parents about how distance learning has been unmotivating and ineffective, but is going back to school worth risking the lives of people who are more vulnerable to COVID-19? The distance learning experience can be improved for our teachers, students, and families. I urge the FCPS administration to invest in training with proven methods such as Virtual Virginia, which is embraced by the Virginia Department of Education, so we can redesign the curriculum to fit a virtual setting. We need to continue using distance learning methods and curriculum until a vaccine or treatment for COVID-19 is made readily available. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated. Our next speaker is number 300, Alejandra Penya. Number 301, Pierce Strong. Speaker 302, Eric Hagapien. Speaker 304, Jennifer Dunn.
Hi. I'm actually Jennifer's friend. She's on a business call right now, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself and her. First of all, I'd like to know how many of you, particularly Dr. Bray Brand, has in his capacity as an official to reach out to the governor's office to ask him, to tell him that none of these options are feasible, especially for a place like Fairfax County? I'm also a little disappointed that it's 11 o'clock, and I just saw it flash across the screen that he joined the session, that Dr. Bray Brand joined the session at 11 o'clock. This has been going on for two hours. So I would like an explanation of why he's actually only joining the session two hours later when this is his most important piece of the job. But I'd also like to know who has reached out to the governor's office to ask if this is, to say this is not feasible? I'm also concerned about screen time. I do not want my kid, as a parent who limits the kid's screen time, I don't want my kids on the. I don't want my kids on the screen two hours a day. Prior to this, our kids had maybe 30 minutes a day and then they were forced to have at least two hours a day. I don't think that's healthy. So for the parents who don't want screen time, are we going to be given the old-fashioned textbook for distance learning or other options? I'd also like to speak on behalf of my two kids. Two of my kids who have had, undergo speech therapy, they rely heavily on lip reading and facial expressions. They are going to be hurt in the long run if teachers are forced to wear masks and everyone around them is forced to wear a mask. They won't be able to learn in that kind of environment. I'd also like to talk about, as someone with a history of mental health in our family, I believe these social distancing and masks in a time when we're supposed to be teaching kids empathy and inclusion, we are telling them to stay away from everyone. I don't see how this is teaching any sort of empathy or inclusion for their fellow men when we're being forced to stay away from them. And I will have to unfortunately withdraw my kids from Fairfax County if this is going to be the case because it's going to be more harmful in the long run. And we are not somewhat a family who can afford private school. I'd also like to piggyback on the mother who recently said that this is a 40% plan and 40% is failure. I completely agree. And that was a mom who was speaking about her child going into kindergarten. But as a mom of someone in first and second grade, I can tell you that while the teachers did a great job trying to work with them, my kids learned nothing from distance learning. If anything, it was from, if they learned anything this spring, it was from me who have resources.
Thank you very much. Speaker 304, will you please share your name for our record since we have Ms. Dunn as the speaker of note? I'm not able to hear you.
Kristi Seeny, and my number was 255.
Would you spell your last name, please?
S-E-N-Y.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Speaker 305, Jean Marie Nagel.
Hello. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. My name is Jean Marie Nagel. I teach sixth grade advanced academics at Lorton Station Elementary. I've lived in Morquide and Fairfax County for 15 years. And my most immediate concerns are health-related with regards to the return to school plan. There's been no appreciable medical advance regarding the control of COVID-19 since we unknowingly exited the building on March 12th, not to return for a very long time. Regarding the health and safety of students and staff, there are many unknowns about the virus for two reasons. One, it hasn't run its course. And two, the risk depends strongly on what we do as a society. We should continue to protect our citizens and return to distance learning. I appreciate Ms. Otero speaking as a public health expert. Social distancing gives a strong positive effect in keeping the virus at bay. The risk is possibly lower for students, but classrooms must have teachers and teachers are at a much greater, many teachers are at a much greater risk. According to the CDC, almost 40% of adults over the age of 18 have some underlying condition that puts them at a higher risk for developing serious illness if infected with the virus. Often, people don't even know they have an underlying condition until they have a different problem. I don't know what the acceptable threshold for teacher deaths would be after, if we open live, but I'm sure there's some number that you might have set. Not all students have, also, not all students have the best hygienic practices. I can't imagine what procedures for something simply using the restrooms would look like. We have some classrooms with bathrooms in our building, but most students use one of our three group bathrooms. Distancing would make these facilities available to one student at a time, one student at a time. If 400 students use these facilities, I'm not convinced that there would even be enough time in school for everyone to get the chance to use the facilities in a given day. And 400 would be half of the students coming to the building. We've always had difficulty with people knowingly sending sick children to school in addition to sending students to school who then develop symptoms. We've not been able to solve the problem of parents being unable to pick up sick children in a timely manner. Those are real problems. Returning part-time would, part-time would be nearly impossible for teachers. Teaching online is different from teaching in the classroom and it's more than twice the work. Having teachers provide all services is an untenable situation. And there's a very real possibility that opening in school would be changed to distance learning when an outbreak occurs. That's not an if, but a when. There is no cure nor vaccine. I'm so glad I don't have to make this decision. I think this decision is a no-win, so good luck making it.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Speaker 306, Kathleen Somato. Speaker 308, Amanda Herrera. Speaker 309, Velina Brazelton. I'm sorry, Speaker 308, are you present? I see that you've logged on. Okay. Speaker 309, Velina Brazelton.
Hello.
Oh, okay. Speaker 308.
Yeah, sorry about that, technology is not working and I'm on a work call, so I'm trying to mute that. Can you hear me okay now?
I can. Please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. So my name is Amanda Herrera and my son is going to be a senior. And the thought of him losing his senior year is just heartbreaking. Seniors will not have another year to make up for the lack of instruction and activities that they will miss out on if high school does not resume in person. I'd also like to start by asking FCPS to allow for parents and students the opportunity to make their own decisions regarding in-person and virtual training. Those who are at high risk can stay at home, those who are not or who don't have the option because their parents have to go to work can resume in person. In all honesty, this is our health and I don't believe that FCPS should have the right to make decisions regarding a student or a parent or a teacher or staff's health. I'd like to also focus on high school music and programs such as marching band. Studies by the Vienna Philharmonic in Austria and the United States Army Band found that there is no additional risk to be infected by COVID by playing a wind instrument. The Army Band's research was led by Lieutenant Colonel Addison, who also oversaw the effects for the Ebola pandemic in Africa. And again, their studies showed that there's no additional risk. Music and athletics allow for scholarship opportunities without which some kids may not have the opportunity to go to college. Additionally, students in other states that are allowed to resume such activities will be allowed to compete for and awarded such scholarships, which leave out our very talented FCPS students. The current Virginia plan states that even in phase three, the limit for music programs is 50 people. Yet, in Governor Northam's plan, he spoke of about a month ago on his PowerPoint, it stated that phase three would remove restrictions for a number of people. So it's conflicting numbers and data for the little bit that is out there in regards to music and sports and activities. Please look at the facts and data. Speaker 266 brought up a great point about other places such as stores, restaurants, and theaters being open by the time school would resume. So if everything else is open, what are the grounds for keeping school closed when people are going to be out interacting anyways? Speaker 267 pointed out that other countries have found that reopening schools did not contribute to additional COVID outbreaks. Speakers 268 and 271 pointed out that data shows that kids in the age ranges of 0 to 18 have zero, that's no, deaths in the state of Virginia and are the lowest group to have infections rate, infection rates of all age ranges. When the numbers are lower than the flu rates, how do you justify closing the schools for COVID but not for the common flu? Please follow the data and facts. I'd also like to point out that the lack of responses from FCPS administration is really upsetting. I've emailed everybody in the administration and the superintendent's email is just set to auto reply. While I understand that there's overwhelmingly responses and questions out there, the lack of, I think, responses is disappointing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Herrera. Speaker 309, Velina Brazelton. Speaker 310, Anna Buchand.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Hi. My name is Anna Buchand and I'm a school psychologist and a member of FCFT in Fairfax County. I'm grateful to be able to work for FCPS and very much appreciate my job helping elementary school students and their families. Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, and members of the school board for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Thank you for your support of mental health resources in FCPS. Listen to the community comments. I want to thank the parents who've taken the time to share their point of view. I've heard from some of them of how spring distance learning impacted their families for the worse. I think we can all agree that we would never choose distance learning if we had not been forced into it by the pandemic. I can see why other school systems in other countries have tried so hard to reopen because it's really what's best for students. The first thing I noticed is that before other countries reopened their schools, the rate of new COVID cases was much lower than what's currently occurring in Fairfax. In Fairfax County, the rate of new COVID cases has dropped dramatically from the hundreds that were reported a few weeks ago, but it's still around 50 to 70 per day. France recently had 407 cases out of a population, new cases out of a population of 67 million. And when their schools reopened for 30% of their students, there are about 70 new cases linked to schools and those schools closed immediately. In Israel, when they reopened schools, there were over 200 confirmed cases linked to schools and those schools were closed and 6,800 students and teachers were put in quarantine. Iceland, with a population of 3,600,000 people, reopened schools only after new COVID cases fell to single digits. Because of our current rate of COVID infection and even without the threat of a second wave in the fall, it would be irresponsible not to offer a distance learning option with all the bells and whistles. We need to plan that some or many of our schools will have to be closed again after we reopen and we need to provide students with the best education we can plan for. I'm worried that our Title I schools and communities of color will have their schools closed more often due to the disproportionately higher rate of cases in those communities. I'm also worried that we will be exacerbating the spread of COVID-19 in our most vulnerable populations. Instead of in-person learning, I would want to expand support for teachers and parent liaisons to reach out to families of English language learners to identify and remove barriers to participation. I know FCPS resources are not infinite. A remote option might be our only option, given our resources, if our number one priority is the health and safety of all students and staff. In-person teaching, as proposed, assumes that students can socially distance as needed. Has Fairfax County Health Department reviewed the safety of classrooms where social distancing can't be maintained and masks are not worn due to the age of students? What will the county do when students don't wear masks, don't social distance? The lives of myself, my family, and students and their families depend on school being a safe place. Teachers overwhelmingly support online learning at this time because of their hands-on experience in the classroom. Given the uncertainty about returning to in-person classroom, if there is in-person learning in the fall, teachers should have the option of teaching online.
Thank you very much, Ms. Buchand. Speaker 311, Sherry Sherrier.
Hello, this is Sherry Sherrier. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk today. I have three children and have had a child in Fairfax County Public Schools since 2001, so 19 years. My youngest is a rising sophomore at Chantilly High School, which is one of the largest high schools in the county. I am also a substitute teacher for Fairfax County Public Schools. I was very disappointed in the online learning. My child had seven classes and only met with each child, each class for 45 minutes a week. That was just unacceptable. It was so disappointing compared to some of her friends in several different private schools in the area who are meeting every day up to seven hours. I know she will be behind, especially in math and foreign language. I would like to see schools open on time as normal. Unfortunately, this was not even an option on the survey. We have to consider, as many other speakers have said, the mental health of our children. They have experienced a great loss in not being able to go to school this last quarter of our year. Sports, extracurricular activities, and just, you know, especially with teenagers and younger students, because I sub a lot in elementary school, they just miss their friends and some normalcy in their life. High school students are planning for their future and thinking about college. My older kids graduated from Chantilly High School with honors. One has already graduated from Virginia Tech. The other one is a rising senior in pre-med at Virginia Tech. They had all the wonderful advantages and opportunities that our county was able to offer them, which just leads to my disappointment knowing how the virtual learning went. So I pray that our children will be back in school in the fall in person. Several other speakers have suggested taking a survey of those who will not send their kids to school, even if open, that might possibly help them to make decisions. If we do end up with distance learning, it needs to be every day for a minimum of five hours. So thank you so much for your time and I look forward to hearing what happens.
Thank you very much. Speaker 312, Joanne Sears.
Hi, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
I respectfully ask you to open Fairfax County Schools for 100% face-to-face instruction in the fall. The following reasons are important to consider when we're opening the schools. Mental health. Remote learning has isolated students and has increased depression, anxiety, and mental health issues among our students. Social interaction with peers is critical for emotional well-being and virtual education. We'll continue to erode student mental health the longer it is allowed to continue. That's why you're taking time. If someone else is speaking, please. This is a fact. All COVID-19 data points to virtually no risk of serious illness or death to people under age 20. In addition, despite restrictions being lifted in many areas, COVID in Virginia, the illnesses and deaths are trending downward. Virtual learning puts an incredible burden on our low-income, single-parent, and dual-working families, especially those with students in the earlier grade levels. Virtual learning will require parents to pay for childcare or will leave children and students home alone and without the educational support measures needed to ensure success. In many cases, students will be left unmonitored and unaccountable, except in the grade book. This scenario will not encourage students to reach their full potential by any measure. For those families who prefer to keep students home at this time because of health risks or vulnerable family members, they should be allowed to choose to continue virtual learning arrangements. And those have been a part of Virginia for many decades. However, for the vast amount of families like mine who are ready to return to school in the fall, that option should also be provided. It is time to stop allowing for fear to dominate our decisions and instead move forward to providing the face-to-face instruction students need for their overall academic and mental health. I would like to also note that everybody on this, in this event, should read the Virginia Constitution. The governor has no say over how schools are run or whether or not they're open. It is up to the school board. So the governor has no say and parents should gather together and please join us at hashtag VA Back to School for those of us who are ready to go back to learning. My son is taking multiple AP classes in the fall and if we do online learning, which was horrific, not because of the teachers but because of the school system, our children will fall further and further behind academically. I'm also deeply concerned for friends who have children, who have IEPs, who need that interaction. Our children are going to suffer, we're going to fall behind, and Fairfax County Public Schools will be in decline if we don't get our children back in a safe and reasonable full-time classroom setting. Thank you very much.
Speaker 313, Min Keung. Speaker 314, Katie Richter.
This is Katie Richter. Can you hear me?
Richter. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, I can.
My name is Katie Richter and I am speaking to you today through multiple lenses. I am a taxpayer, constituent, and mom in the Robinson Pyramid and I'm also an eighth-grade science teacher in Irving Middle School in the West Springfield Pyramid. As plans are evaluated for reopening schools in the fall, I would like to express my concerns with the expectations being placed on teachers with children of their own. To be specific, I'm talking about the Phase 1 plan and the mindset we would be in if all of us were in Phase 1. When FCPS moved to distance learning this spring, I immediately felt the burden of impossibility facing two days of synchronous teaching. The mandated time in front of a computer was nearly impossible with my husband working full-time and having two small children with me at home. I researched the new EFMLE leave being offered and I nearly took advantage of it. In the end, I decided against taking the leave because I cared so deeply about my students and dreaded the thought of leaving them during this tumultuous time. In order to be able to fulfill the synchronous class requirement, my husband took Fridays off and muddled through Wednesdays as best I could and I worked for hours after the kids went to bed and through the weekends, planning and assessing. While I honestly did not want to say goodbye to my amazing students, I was also desperately in need of a summer break. And these feelings were all with only two days of synchronous teaching. I'm at a loss as to what I will do if I have to make four work. To be clear, I'm not concerned about the amount of work, just the mandated schedule. I'm up for the challenge of giving these students a quality educational experience as well as some much-needed structure throughout the week. I'd be willing to participate in a hybrid of prerecorded, self-directed, student-led, and teacher-led lessons that are designed with a flexibility in mind. Other Other institutions have embraced the flexibility of telework, and I believe we will need to as well if we expect this to work. For example, even the federal government has allowed for maximum telework flexibility options. My understanding is this means that while we can expect people to work eight hours in these uncertain times, it is not expected that those eight hours of work must occur during specific, daily, scheduled time. I'm sure you all know that parenting does not stick to a set schedule, particularly for younger kids. It's unrealistic to expect parents to be able to wall off four full days of synchronous teaching while their children are also at home. We are in this situation because of dire circumstances. We cannot operate on a normal schedule because these are not normal times, and acting as such creates undue stress in the homes of teaching parents. As FCPS considers plans, it is important to remember that the needs of teachers and the needs of parents are not always separate. Many of us are both. I hope you will hear my concerns as a constituent mom and teacher and consider them when evaluating the best option for moving forward this fall. Thank you.
Thank you very much, very much, Ms. Rich Richter. Speaker 315, Katie Dolagoff. Speaker 316, Brenda Harrell. I'm sorry, Speaker 315, are you present? I see you've logged on. Katie Dolagoff. Speaker 316, Brenda Harrell. Speaker 317, Eya Takahashi. Speaker 318, Beth Shelby.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Shelby. Please proceed.
Good morning. I am a parent of two children in the school system, a rising sixth and fifth grader. I work for a federal agency and my husband for a company, and the expectations of the services that we provided our customers during this pandemic never change. Our employers use many techniques such as telework, extended leave, and an in-office team approach in order to meet diverse needs and family situations. I am asking Fairfax County Schools to do the same. All workers, not just teachers, were expected to be flexible in what they were doing with their employers and most without any additional compensation. The plan that Fairfax County Public Schools adopts must consider what is best for the students and educates them the best. That is the bottom line. It appears that we all agree that there is no substitute for in-class learning. However, there is not an option for returning to full or almost full-time in-class learning. Due to this virus, you will never be able to create an environment where all parents feel comfortable going back to school. You need to permit options that those that feel comfortable to go back, those that stay home, that option. With any plan, we need to have a benchmark for when things will return to normal. It will ever be enough. Statistics can support either side, and the advice that we get from healthcare professionals changes every day. The goal should be to get back to in-school learning as soon as possible. This requires a flexible plan that can be adjusted if numbers get better by the fall. Some commentators indicate a vaccine should be a standard. What if there isn't one, or they do not think that the vaccine is sufficient? We have continued to go to school in the past despite viruses of this magnitude. With any plan, parents and teachers should not be responsible for PPE. That should fall on the employer, Fairfax County Public Schools. Distance learning should not be substandard learning. Our experience this spring was terrible. No consistency appears to have occurred across the schools. Some speakers indicated they had wonderful experiences, some did not. There was no consistency. School administrators and teachers implemented inconsistently. They were not given or able to follow up consistently throughout with the directions they received from Fairfax County Public Schools. We had some great teachers, and we had some teachers that checked out and took an early summer vacation. Why only work a few hours a few days? Why have Fridays off? Why was a normal schedule not followed? I understand the previous speaker, but I am a working parent, and my job, besides being a working parent, I have to work and educate my children on top of providing day-to-day, day-to-day services for them. No insurance that children are getting equal learning opportunities the way that the previous distant learning appeared. There is limited instruction time. Why? Why did we go from such a normal standard of time to such a limited one? There's no accountability. The SOLs were canceled. No charts or any measures were put in place indicating whether teachers are teaching effectively or consistently across the county. The superintendent was not sufficiently held accountable for the failure. You asked again.
Thank you very much. Speaker 319, I'm sorry, 318, 319, Will Fox.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so thank you to the school board and all those working to open the schools again in these extraordinary times. My wife and I are parents of a rising second grader, and we believe we should be using the resources of our community to create the most ambitious plans to get our students back safely. Let me add my voice saying that being physically at school plays an essential role in the social and educational development of the students, especially in elementary schools. We've had many speakers to this effect, so let me, in my three minutes, offer some concrete suggestions. So Fairfax has some of the largest resources of any county in the U.S. We should be using these resources to get our schools running again. Let's start with strong ideas of how to open safely and then ask, how can we make it happen? I want to talk about testing. The plans as laid out are not ambitious enough about a strong COVID testing program for the schools. Here are some things we need and I did not see in the opening plans. We should COVID test every student the week before school starts and after long breaks. Let's have a clean start. Students should be temperature-checked on arriving to school every day and possibly more than that. If you arrive with a fever or other symptoms, you should be COVID tested immediately at the school. If positive, you can then immediately quarantine that class, and then you can follow up and test the other students in the class. And again, let's test them at the schools. Let's not leave it to chance or health insurance of the family or other considerations. Let's also have lots of randomized testing of students to find non-symptomatic cases we often hear about. Actually, I think we should consider spending the money to test every student every few weeks. At least it shouldn't be out of the question. So a quick calculation, say a COVID test costs $100, then for less than $2,000 per student, you can test each student every other week of the school year. So a couple of things, that's much less than what we already spend per student for the schools, which is more than $15,000 a student. And second, many parents are now considering spending much more than this on daycare arrangements. So it could be a really good return on investment if it helps schools open and stay open. So why do we need strong testing? So it's likely that many COVID cases will show up at the schools just based on the amount of community transmission now. So we need testing and screening to catch the cases as they come into the schools. And second, it seems we need more data about how COVID spreads through young populations. We know children tend not to get serious COVID cases, but how contagious they are is much less well-known. So let me say that even though children seem to be at low risk of serious cases, they can transmit it to other family members who are more at risk. So we do need a strong opt-out option for certain family situations. So to summarize, testing provides crucial feedback and information, helping us to decide when to go to 100% opening. We can learn how well we're doing with social distancing and masks. Is six feet enough? Five feet? Four feet? Et cetera. So we keep hearing that we need testing, 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 and let's be the ones to step up and do this. If any county in the resources, if any county in the U.S. has the resources to do this, it should be us.
Thank you very much, sir. Speaker 320, Leslie O'Shaughnessy.
Hi, Leslie O'Shaughnessy here, and I'd just like to say I appreciate the comments made by Will Fox. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. My name is Leslie O'Shaughnessy. I am a high school Fairfax County teacher of 13 years, and I'm concerned about the safety of our students and teachers and the return to school plans that have been presented. August to December will be our most challenging period of COVID risk in this next school year in combination with the flu. It is anticipated that some form of vaccine and/or antibody options will begin to emerge in January. Why not wait until January to roll out in-person instruction? Despite in-depth planning for wide-ranging gyrations in our schools, there is still much we cannot satisfactorily achieve in prep for in-person instruction. Social distancing on buses and in classrooms, and the coordination of bathroom visits, lunches, and much-needed electus classes have yet to be resolved. The big question is, will the educational gain of this arrangement actually exceed the stress inflicted on our families and staff? Under the current plan, masks are not required for students. Social distancing is not being strictly enforced with students. Temperature screening is not occurring prior to entering the buses or schools, and COVID testing is not being conducted prior to the start of the school year. As of May 29, 2020, the Commonwealth of Virginia requires people to wear cloth face coverings when spending time in indoor public settings. Why isn't FCPS abiding by this mandate? Aren't there legal considerations to this concern? This does not feel like a responsible arrangement for staff that would be surrounded by hundreds of students every single day. For this reason, students and staff alike must have the ability to opt out of in-person instruction outside of medical reasons for the first half of the school year. Some have compromised family members, others have a lack of comfort with the life-threatening risk of contracting COVID in our school buildings. My overall recommendation is that teachers and students who are comfortable returning to school should do so. Teachers and students who are not comfortable returning to school should pursue the option of online learning or online teaching. Once these groups are established, teachers in each respective group should be dedicated to either all online instruction or all in-person instruction. Without an opt-out option, irregardless of medical conditions, we stand to lose families to online education companies, perhaps for more than one school year, along with some of our best teachers unnecessarily. Please make opt-out options available to all students and teachers. This COVID pandemic is a life-or-death consideration that has not lessened in severity. Why not delay the in-person start to our school year until January, when some form of vaccine or antibody options are anticipated? Thank you very much for the opportunity to share my thoughts and concerns.
Thank you very much. Speaker 321, Elizabeth Stanley. Speaker 322, Hanadi Eltahir. Speaker 323, Laura Richard. Speaker 324, Chris Kurgos. Speaker 325, Ghalit Ben Zion. Speaker 326, Mason Baldwin.
Hello.
Yes.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mason Baldwin, and I'm an incoming freshman at Oakton High School. There's almost nothing I can provide you that the school board hasn't already thought of, nothing except for the voice of your students, something overlooked by many school counties but important nonetheless. Ladies and gentlemen, for me and many other students in FCPS, our mental health has deteriorated since the lockdown. There's one simple reason for this. We don't go to a physical school location anymore. You see, in the eyes of the students, school isn't just a place for academics. Academics are an important part of the school atmosphere, yes, but school is also a place to make friends and make connections with people. Ever since the lockdown, me and countless students haven't been able to make substantial social interaction with people that matter to us. Thus, our mental health has deteriorated. For example, on my social media, I posed a question to my FCPS followers. The question was, how much has your mental health deteriorated since the COVID-19 lockdown? Unsurprisingly, as displayed in my earlier evidence, most people answer that their mental health has deteriorated overwhelmingly. As an incoming freshman myself, I worry about the ability to make friends in high school if we adopt a virtual class setting in the school year. Coupled with the fact that about 20% of all teens experience depression before they reach adulthood, I am worried about the mental health of my classmates, too. This should be a major consideration in opening schools, as it is a fact that many schools fail to consider this. And in time is uncertain today, FCPS must set a precedent on how they deal with the mental health of their students. Based on this and many other factors, I recommend the school board open the schools with the 50% plan for the start of the school year. Many of the speakers here believe we can either go to school or do virtual learning. That is false. If we reopen schools, we are always able to shut them down and switch to virtual learning if there is a resurgence of COVID-19. A reason I suggest opening schools is because it is a fact that COVID-19 cases in Fairfax County have been on the decline. Not only that, but virtual learning just isn't cutting it. I saw the plans for virtual learning next school year. The school board believes that if they double the virtual class time, it'll make the quality of education better. This is false. Speaking from experience, as I diligently attended every online class, the problem was never with the timing, it was with the ability to connect with the teachers and successfully learn in an online setting. Doubling the time does little to nothing to help students learn. Also, I believe the health plans FCPS are planning to put in place were. Getting students to wear masks on the bus and in hallways will effectively minimize student and staff contact with COVID-19. The 25% plan also won't work because we will only have one day of synonymous lesson a week, which isn't enough. The 50% plan provides students with an excellent quality and quantity of education. This is the only plan that provides that. I would like to thank the school board for providing a platform for input on this topic. Goodbye.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is 327, Anna Lenave. Speaker 328, Katie Keir.
Can you hear me, Dr. Anderson?
Yes, I can. Please proceed. Thank you.
Yes, hi. My name is Anna Lenave, and I have two graduates at Lake Braddock Secondary School and a rising sophomore and seventh grader currently enrolled. As I listened to your last school board meeting, I strongly objected to the FCPS staff focusing its attention on scenario number two, a hybrid plan, as presented in the, to the school board. According to the CDC data which many have cited, from February 1st to June 6th, 137 people aged 24 and under died from COVID. In the same timeframe, 149 people under the age of 24 died from the flu. When you look at those numbers in a broader context, factoring in the lockdowns and mitigation strategies over time, and acknowledging that a flu vaccine actually exists, any consideration of a hybrid scenario because of COVID-19 is unsupported by any CDC data. The fact is that COVID-19 rarely presents itself in students. If children are vulnerable, lives with elderly, special homeschool accommodations should be made for them. Scenario two is really about protecting the vulnerable staff and elderly population of Fairfax County, which I appreciate. But shouldn't accommodations be focused on providing PPE and robust virtual options for these people? Some of the requirements mentioned for scenario two is doubling the bus fleet and one to two days a week in-person instruction. If you accept the premise that the hybrid is financially and logistically doable, please do consider the impact on another vulnerable population, the poor and low-income families of Fairfax County. Talk about a huge financial impact on minority families who now have to scramble for childcare they cannot afford. That needs to be part at the forefront of any cost-benefit analysis. Also, the logistical nightmare to all parents, like myself, with multiple schools and grade levels and organizing schedules for days on and days off is mind-boggling. Scientists are saying we need to wear a mask and socially distance as possible. I agree with this. If everyone wears a mask, six-foot distancing is not needed in classrooms or on buses. But students and staff are going to have to make some hard choices. Do I feel safe for me and my children to go to school or work, or do I not? Let's make atomic station for them who feel vulnerable. This is the new normal. Hard decisions are going to have to be made, but they're individual decisions as to what level of safety we can feel comfortable with. So my recommendations is go virtually totally or not at all. This hybrid plan is an expensive overkill, statistically unsupported by data, and spends precious FCPS staff time working on a plan that they never been given. Let's see. If the state's government requires unsupported measures...
Thank you very much, Speaker 327. Our next speaker is 328, Katie Keir.
I did? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Great, thank you. My name is Katie Keir, and I've been teaching in public Title I schools for 28 years. I'm currently an FCPS kindergarten teacher, and I speak today from the perspective of an early childhood educator. I teach four and five-year-old children. Many of our children don't speak English yet. This is the first school experience for many. What do I do when children need to be hugged or passed off from their families with a gentle handhold and I have to stay six feet away from them? When they fall and need a band-aid? When we have to huddle together for lockdown drills or exit the building quickly for a fire drill? When a child needs help blowing their nose? When they need their shoes tied? When they miss their families and need to sit in my lap? When they need to see the pictures in the book I'm reading? When I'm teaching a child to read and need to sit side by side with them? When they are drawn to the other child who speaks their language and they need to play together and connect? When they want to run on the playground and forget they can't go close to others? When they look expectantly at the adults for reassurance that this thing called school will be okay and all they see are our eyes, trying desperately to communicate that this will all be okay when we are fearful ourselves? What will this do to our young children as their first school experience? It will be impossible to enforce social distancing in a classroom of young children. The diagrams of how a classroom could be socially distanced are not realistic nor healthy in an early childhood classroom. Young children do not sit in desks and nor should they be expected to. Learning is social, and isolating children within confined spaces will be a traumatic experience, impacting social, emotional, and academic learning. It is cruel to even entertain the idea that teachers would make children sit in a desk or at a table all day facing forward. Instead of supporting, teaching, and nurturing children, we will spend the day telling children no. no and enforcing protocols. We know that children learn through play and with others, with talk and collaboration, inquiry, exploration, and choice. I can't imagine a classroom experience for young learners where they are unable to share blocks, math tools, books, writing materials, and where they are unable to collaborate, play, and just be kids. These restrictions are not conducive to the kind of responsive, child-centered instruction that has children thrive. I am incredibly distraught over the idea that I may be complicit in a child getting sick or taking the virus home to a susceptible family member because I was unable to enforce social distancing and mask-wearing in a classroom of young children. I want nothing more than to be back in a classroom with children. However, a planned virtual model, not crisis teaching as occurred this spring, is the best option for our youngest learners. Making a decision now to go 100% virtual would allow teachers to continue to learn from each other and develop effective virtual teaching for our students over the summer. It would allow us to connect with families of incoming students and begin to build relationships and plans for being partners in their child's education, not as homeschooling, but rather as partners with teacher. It would be a predictable schedule. As a lifelong educator, I fully believe that do no harm is my guiding principle. Returning to school in person at this point will do harm. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Katie. Our next speaker is 329, Drew Falconer. Speaker 330, Paula Weiss. Speaker 331, Larry Little. Mr. Little, I see that you've signed in. Are you with us?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you. I'm an FCPS teacher and dad and a member of FCFT. You've heard from many folks with strong opinions on both sides about whether schools should be open next year or not. I'm here to add my voice to my FCFT and FEA friends and colleagues in saying that the right thing to do, the only safe thing to do, is to keep schools closed until we have a proven vaccine. Then, once we reopen schools, all students, staff, and everyone else who wants to enter a school or bus should be required to prove they've been vaccinated. I say this because I'm convinced that all the steps intended to keep us all safe in school will not work. That system will fail, and we will not be safe. Effective social distancing is impossible. Americans are not good at conforming. Many students, young and old, will not follow the rules. Some staff may not as well. Schools will not be safe enough. Those who focus solely on the risks to children alone are missing the point. The staff will be at significant risk. Schools will be unsafe, and many people will get COVID-19. However, I don't think FCPS will keep schools closed until we absolutely have to. I hear the many voices pleading for schools to reopen and the legitimate reasons for that. I think we are very likely to have a hybrid system next year with some in-person learning and some distance learning, so I'll focus my comments there. I think there are a few things our hybrid plan must have. Most critically, everyone who wants to remain at home, students and staff, must be allowed to do so regardless of the reasons. Trying to stay at home in the face of a deadly disease is 100% reasonable and must not be penalized. Staff must be allowed to work remotely. Second, we must do a much better job with distance learning. Many schools and districts did it well this spring. We don't have to reinvent that wheel. We need a major effort to find the places that did it well and learn from them. We should find the best practices out there and copy them. Third, students need as much time with their teachers as possible, whether in-person or online. We must do whatever we can to maximize high-quality contact time. Fourth, expectations for attendance, participation, grading, et cetera, for distance learning should be as close as possible to expectations for at-school learning. Students learning at home should be accountable, on-camera, and participating fully. And finally, some staff will need much more thorough training in the distance learning technology we will use. Many will be willing to spend their own time this summer getting that training, but some will not. FCPS should consider delaying the start of instruction next year for a week or two and using that contracted time to ensure that all staff are properly trained in all the technology we will need. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Little. Speaker 332, Nancy Dre.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for this... Am I echoing?
No, you're fine.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for this opportunity to share my perspective and hear the views of others. I am a parent of a twice-exceptional high school student, i.e., bright and quirky, brimming with ability and also very much at risk. He is a strong, independent learner who struggled in school but thrived with the spring distance learning. For us, this situation offered as a silver lining amidst the horrors of the pandemic... What? Sorry, my son's muting the extra echo. Amidst the horrors of the pandemic, what we had long dreamed of, a chance to combine school with homeschool, a chance for our son to grow and learn in his own way while still connected to the experience of public school and its courses, teachers, and peers. I know this was not everyone's experience, but it was ours, and I know anecdotally, we are not alone. I will attach with my written comments all this specific ways distance learning and reduced synchronicity were supportive of my son's needs, but the key is what is absolutely crucial to support one student may not support another. The author of a May 29 New York Times article reflecting on distance learning and return to school in Australia states that quarantine, quote, "reinforced for me just how different every student is and how one-size-fits-all schooling will always leave some children behind. If anything positive can come of this grand experiment in learning, it might be that schools begin to allow flexibility for students with different needs and learning styles," unquote. Our schools need to be fully prepared for robust, comprehensive, well-supported distance learning for all, not just because, in my view and for reasons described by many others, no other option is presently safe, but also simply because shifting in and out of distance learning as a need for new individual and community quarantines arises is simply untenable and helps no one, and shunting special groups aside into separate programs is discriminatory. Moreover, the notion that we can magically create a normal school experience for our students in the context of a pandemic is wishful thinking. I'm skipping over something here. I urge the board to recognize that some students are very capable of independent learners, and some families are able and available to provide support. Allowing these the flexibility to opt out of some synchronous aspects of school while providing access to already existing curricular resources can free up staff and building resources for others while also meeting these students' needs and keeping them connected to the regular school program. For example, if FCPS insists on a 25% or 50% scenario, which I do not recommend, I suggest allowing a partial homeschool opt-out of just the synchronous in-school sessions by signing a family commitment to ensuring the student masters what was taught there and can participate fully in the rest of the course. Schools would have... Skills for independent learning are part of what we want and need to build in our students. For those who already are highly motivated and learn well on their own, the ability to channel and target this learning productively toward a curricular goal can still be a challenge, and distance learning is a chance to develop this skill. This is but one possibility. Others have suggested, for example, a home-room scenario or full-distance learning with opt-in opportunities in the now-available physical school. The key is, we take seriously the diverse needs of our diverse community and bring some flexibility...
Thank you very much, Ms. Dre.
If we do that, we can make this work...
Thank you, ma'am, for joining us this morning.
...to our schools of the future.
Thank you. We will be moving to our next speaker, Ms. Dre. We will be moving to our next speaker.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear.
It's okay. Thank you for joining us. Speaker 333, Mariana Shelley. Speaker 334, Sarah Hobson.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Okay. So, my name is Sarah Hobson, and I live in the Hunter Mill District. I am here today to request that you provide a robust or virtual alternative for any student that wishes or requires it. It's my prediction that we'll be living with this virus for about six months after the vaccine is available. Since the optimistic date for the vaccine to be available is December of this year, I see that we will be living with this virus for the whole of the next school year. I understand that this will not suit all students, so I'm only requesting it as an alternative. But like the last speaker, both my children did really well with the virtual learning. My elder daughter is a rising junior who is slated to take six IB classes for her junior year and yet has asthma, so is at risk. I'm not sure if she'll meet the criteria for virtual learning. However, assuming she does, you are only proposing having core subjects available and not IB classes. What happens to her in her senior year? Does she need to switch schools or do gen ed? Neither of those sounds very viable. In the superintendent's proposal to the school board, he said he did not want to overpromise and was worried that he would not have a match for teachers to courses. But as I see it, there will be more teachers who don't want to teach in person or cannot teach in person for health reasons. I think a previous speaker said that it's about 74% than the other way around. So I would have thought the more students that request the virtual-only learning, the easier it will be to do the match. Students could be combined on a countywide basis rather than a school basis, and the more children that choose the virtual option, the easier it will be to implement social distancing in the school buildings and on the buses. It's my assumption you could also increase the number of students per class from about 30 to 50 in a virtual environment, especially in the higher-grade classes. So questions: What is the medical criteria for the all-virtual option? And does it include all family members? I.e., if a parent has cancer and is therefore at very high risk, then will the children be allowed the option of virtual learning? Or if one child is at high risk, will all the siblings be given the option of virtual learning? So, the numbers. I'm assuming there will be about 10% who will choose the virtual option, which means 18,000 students. So about 1,500 per grade. That is either 50 classes of 30 students or 30 classes of 50 students per grade. I would have thought with that volume, all or at least 90% of all options could be offered. Please reconsider offering a virtual, robust option for all students that request it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is 335, Graham Testin. Mr. Testin, I see that you've logged on. Speaker 335, please join us. Are you able to hear me? I see that you're on.
Yes, I'm right here. Can you hear me?
Now I'm able to, yes. Please continue.
I'm a rising junior at South Lakes High School, and I'm autistic and proud of it. Some other speakers have described the impact of distance learning on students' mental health and motivation. Well, for me, distance learning has been one of the best things that's happened for both my mental health and my motivation. I'm an independent learner, and classes two days a week, combined with not constantly having to worry about grades, allowed the time, time that was previously lacking, to actually learn new material.
Graham, we may have lost you. Graham, why don't... No, I did not. Please go ahead and proceed.
It said my audio was muted.
Go... You can go ahead. I can hear you.
Many... I was more engaged with the class than before because I could post a comment in the chat randomly that'd be rated for seeking at the wrong time. If this had been the case, has been the case for me, it has probably been the case for many others. Many of the speakers have said that students are not engaged with the class or motivated to learn without grades and face-to-face interaction. The implicit assumption is that students are only motivated by grades, not learning, and if that's the case, it's time to change that culture. For years, the assumption implicit in FCPS has been that students, especially teenagers, are inherently lazy, wild, and uninterested in learning. School has become more about discipline than it is about education, which probably contributes to the actual student disengagement. Our grading system can pretty much only be passed... Our grading system can pretty much only be passed by sacrificing learning to finish... Is my audio working?
Yes, we can hear you. Keep going.
Our grading system can pretty much only be passed by sacrificing learning to finish many times more schoolwork than is reasonable, most of which has little relevance to learning. If a system requires any students to choose between their education and their grade, then something is very wrong with that system. I had far more motivation to come to school during distance learning, knowing that I would be evaluated only on my knowledge. People talk about the number of hours a week being insufficient for learning, but two hours a day is well is better than 24 hours wasted. And school was taking some of us 24 hours a day, by the way. Yes, that includes weekends, too, at the end of the quarter. That's what it took to get enough done to pass my classes before I was even allowed to learn. So it is a culture of school that is failing us. Now is an opportunity to change that culture. I know the state's requiring us to do grades, but we could still try to make school more about education than about discipline and business. The pressing of the reset button on our society could enable us to do better this time if we think of being a bit proactive about it. I do miss my teachers, my friends, and normal school, but rushing back to a semblance of normality would gain us nothing and may gravely harm at me, and we would miss a great opportunity. Sooner or later, we must recognize that we're not going back to the same normality. The worlds are always changing, and we should do what we can to shape those changes for the better. Returning to business superficially as usual is not worth even a single person's life. So if you take away anything, please take away this: We're not homogeneous, not special ed students, not students and teachers, not teenagers. Some of us have been waiting years for an opportunity like this, and many more would be helped by changes in the FCPS culture. Not to go back to before, but come out better. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Graham. We have now finished our list. We will go back and call the no-shows or folks who may have signed in later than when they were called. So we will go back to our list from this morning at number 170. Minishka Baskard, are you with us? Number 171, Zuo Zhang. Speaker 172, William Wilder. Mr. Wilder, I see that you've logged on. 172, William Wilder. Speaker 173, Sarah Moot. Speaker 174, Harik. 175, Miriam Akavon. Speaker 176, Emili Smith. Emily Smith, I apologize. Speaker 177, Berkati Bayan. Speaker 177... 78, Tama Ru. Speaker 179, Charlene Wild. Speaker 180, Brian Deng. Speaker 181, Ruth Mecksel. Speaker 182, Rebecca Davis. Speaker 183, Jennifer Hood. Speaker 184, Alessandra Androvic. Speaker 185, Amelia Etterachchi. I apologize for that. Speaker 186, Tareko Khan. Speaker 188, Alicia King. Speaker 189, John Reddington. Speaker 190, Dala Iceman. Speaker 191, Dorsa Suebert. Speaker 192, Lee Su. Speaker 194, John Meng. I see that you've logged on with us. John Meng. Speaker 197, Aisha Ali. Speaker 198, Michelle Larson. Speaker 200, Hum Ak... Speak... Speaker 201, Ashra Nammani.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Ashra Nammani. I'm a former Wall Street Journal reporter who taught journalism at Georgetown University. My son is a rising senior at Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, and we have been in Fairfax County public schools since kindergarten. I'm a longtime parent volunteer. The number-one priority for families is returning our students to school safely. However, we have a crisis at TJ, making our families, students, and staff feel demoralized, unsafe, unwelcome, and intimidated in an increasingly hostile environment as we consider returning to school. After the debacle of distance learning this spring, a small but aggressive group of alumni are now hired... are now hijacking our return to school with knee-jerk, superficial, counterproductive virtue signaling solutions to increasing the numbers of Black, Hispanic, and other underrepresented groups at TJ. We all agree on increasing diversity. I am part of a religious minority, a racial minority, and associate-economic minority as a single mother. We disagree on how to achieve this. We must build a pipeline to success at TJ, and we must support our current and incoming TJ students and families as we ponder this question of how to return to school. Instead, the FCPS School Board heard yesterday from this disturbing alumni network attempting to hijack TJ. They called themselves TJ Alumni Action Group. Many misrepresented themselves by registering as individual. I was on the list to speak but was not heard. When I was heard, the chair told me that the public session had ended, and I could speak at a meeting on Tuesday, which I planned to do. Here's what this alumni group did not tell you. Literally today, one action item being discussed is a call to action to occupy TJ. Yes, occupy TJ. This is their call to action. Should we take over the TJ building and refuse to let anyone else occupy it until they give in to our demands? It seems to be working well for CHAZ CHOP. If you don't know this, CHAZ CHOP is the neighborhood occupied in Seattle. FCPS security and Fairfax County Police should be immediately alerted. Members of this group are hurling allegations of racist at TJ, parents, students, and staff demonizing and vilifying the mostly minority immigrant families at TJ as engaging in pay-to-play as they alleged yesterday. What do we care about? We care about returning to school, and they are shaming us. And furthermore, our TJ principal is engaged to in this diversion of energy, recently sending parents this shaming letter, sharing her journey as a white woman and imploring us to check our quote "privilege." She ponders killing the mascot, the colonial, changing the TJ name, putting in anti-racism curriculum, as if our students are walking racists, as the alumni allege. Let me tell you about our privilege. Our families have survived the Cultural Revolution, poverty, famine, war, communism, and actual colonization. They are mostly immigrant families of color. If we care about race, we need to care about these families, too. And the white families who are there as a racial minority, they should not be humanized. We need to help TJ return to school safely.
Thank you so much for your statements. Our next speaker, number two oh two, Sandy Abraham. Speaker two hundred and three, Genevieve Lens. Speaker two hundred and four, Zia Tompkins. Speaker two hundred and five, Sharon Lick. Speaker two hundred and six, Katrina Bukow. Speaker two hundred and seven, Sonia Arriello. Speaker two hundred and eight, Katina Hajidsky. Speaker two hundred and nine, George Williams. Speaker two hundred and ten, Tara Zeller. Speaker two hundred and eleven, Kristen Lee. Says no switch, which I'm so sorry. Speaker two hundred and twelve, Joanna Sandoval. Speaker two hundred and thirteen, Steven Tepp. Speaker two hundred and fifteen, Jordan Gillick. Speaker two hundred and sixteen, Graah Joins. Speaker two hundred and seventeen, Robert Jones. Speaker two hundred and eighteen, Marina Hoffman. Speaker two hundred and nineteen, Angelica Samudra. Speaker two hundred and twenty, Bettina Guarier. Speaker two hundred and twenty-one, Tanya Anderson. Speaker two hundred and twenty-two, Ivana Escobar. Speaker two hundred and twenty-three, Erin Hernandez. Speaker two twenty-five, Denise Gotti. Speaker two twenty-six, Andrew Watson. Speaker two twenty-seven, Deirdre McCannon. Speaker two twenty-eight, Awo Gray. I see that you've logged in. Speaker two twenty-eight. I will be continuing. Speaker two twenty-nine, Chelsea Harrop. Speaker, excuse me. Two thirty-four, Elliot Bell-Krasner. Speaker two thirty-five, Mikhail Bogdanov. Speaker two thirty-six, Emily Lewis. Speaker two thirty-seven, Kevin Mahoney. Speaker two thirty-eight, Luz Penduro. Speaker two thirty-nine, Vladislav Marchenko. Speaker two forty-one, Olivia Miller. Speaker two forty-two, Colleen San Nicholas Perez Perez. Speaker two hundred and forty-three, Christina Riblet. Speaker two forty-four, Giovanna Woodson. Speaker two forty-six, Edwin Solano. Speaker two forty-seven, Glennan Gordon. Speaker two forty-eight, Shahira Abu-Daj. Speaker two hundred and forty-nine, Tamara Hafner. Speaker two hundred and fifty-two, Chris Vu. Speaker two hundred and fifty-three, Jennifer Dunn. Speaker two hundred and fifty-four, Jessica Olivon. Speaker two hundred and fifty-six, Hoa Nguyen. Speaker two fifty-seven, Sonia Arroyano. Speaker two hundred and fifty-eight, Polly Smith. Speaker two hundred and sixty-two, Cherry Lewis. Speaker two sixty-three, Michael Ermarth. Speaker two hundred and sixty-five, Megan Gross. Speaker two hundred and sixty-nine, Laurel Fararini. Speaker two hundred and seventy, Ines Hill. Speaker two hundred and seventy-three, Jen Jones. Speaker two hundred and seventy-four, Toma Dunn. Speaker two hundred and seventy-five, Anan Vasu Devon. Speaker two hundred and seventy-seven, Leslie Houston. Speaker two hundred and seventy-eight, Imran Alim. Speaker two hundred and seventy-nine, Erin Ferguson. Speaker two hundred and eighty, Megan Gim. Speaker two hundred and eighty-four, Frederick Landry. Speaker two hundred and eighty-six, Becky Pascal. Speaker two hundred and eighty-seven, Noel Goldberg. Speaker two hundred and eighty-eight, Carol Ellenberger. Speaker two hundred and ninety, Brian Dahl. Speaker two hundred and ninety-two, Marissa Rollins. Speaker two ninety-three, Lisa Devon. Speaker two ninety-six, Lane Well. Speaker two ninety-seven, Hojen Lee. Speaker two hundred and ninety-eight, Arterda Bigford. Speaker three hundred, Alejandra Penna. Speaker three hundred and one, Pierce Strong. Speaker three hundred and two, Eric Hagopian.
I'm here. Can you hear me and see me?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm glad you're able to join us.
Sorry for being late. So I'm going to paraphrase a little bit. I had a long-written testimony I submitted to the Diligent Board site, but I just kind of want to paraphrase now. That's okay?
Yes, sir.
First and foremost, I really appreciate you guys taking the time to poll the community and even host this. This has been exhaustive for you and for everyone, but a lot of really great feedback in watching all the parents' concerns and students. They did a great job speaking. So I have two in OCU elementary. I have one going into Woodson as a freshman. I just have to say and hammer again, I think the full-time online delivery option has to be available for people to attend to, not just for medical reasons. Whether coronavirus comes and goes in waves or whatever happens, we're going to have to have a future of online learning, period. So I understand that's not ideal for everybody, and one of the things that my wife and I were talking about is we saw a few weeks back a physical option that we thought was kind of ingenious. It was having one week in person and then two weeks remote or offline. That would not only give all the kids the ability to have routines back, waking up on time, having lunch being made, going through the commute, and kind of seeing everybody all together. And then if, for some odd awful reason, somebody becomes asymptomatic or becomes symptomatic or has illness, at least the cohort's together. It would be really easy to do contract tracing, and you have a built-in quarantine period that keeps at least online learning going on for a digital fourteen days. Just curious as to why that fell off, and would like to see that come back. The other thing that I wanted to kind of hit real quick, we reviewed all fifty-seven slides, tremendous amount of work went into them. One thing we did not see was a decent amount of legal risk analysis. So what happens if an asymptomatic child disobeys social distancing or keeping a mask on or forces themselves into a certain situation with a teacher? Are you, are you asking families or staff members to sign any acceptance of risk agreements? And then also in conjunction with that, any economic impacts that the, the school board would have to handle by the county if lawsuits began to ensue? I want to also just kind of throw there, I've heard a lot of really good ideas over the past couple of nights and days watching these videos. Have we considered partnering with a private entity like K-12, who already has a lot of seamless online materials that are up to standard and up to code per se, and allow that to be the curriculum, rather than trying to ask all the teachers to adopt and transfer and transform their current materials in the blackboard? I think that might save everybody a lot of headache. And just to highlight a couple of really good ideas I thought I heard over the last couple sessions, a lot of teachers are concerned about the plan's safety for themselves, but what happens with substitute teachers? What happens when people do get ill? Are substitutes who are high-risk going to even want to come into certain situations? I think we need to train teachers and students how to use Blackboard better. I'm head of IT for my company. We went remote in forty-eight hours, pushed everyone home. Again, we had capabilities similar to Blackboard, but no one was really, they're not really fluent in them. We needed to spend time training. Thank you for the time. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you very much. I apologize, but I missed a speaker on the list that had some trouble earlier. So Speaker two hundred and forty, Priscilla Di, Di Stefano, if you're with us, Ms. Di Stefano. I will try to call you again as we proceed down the list, because I do realize you had a little bit of trouble earlier. Going back, please bear with me as I run down this list. Speaker three hundred and five, Jean Marie Nagel. Speaker three hundred and six, Kathleen Sumato. Speaker three hundred and nine, Velina Brazelton. Speaker three hundred and thirteen, Min Hewing. Speaker three hundred and fifteen, Katie Dolagoff. Speaker three hundred and sixteen, Brenda Harrell. Speaker three hundred and seventeen, Aya Takahashi. Speaker three hundred and twenty-one, Elizabeth Stanley. Speaker three hundred and twenty-two, Hanadi Eltehir. Speaker three hundred and twenty-three, Laura Richard. Speaker three twenty-four, Chris Kurgos. Speaker three twenty-five, Galit Ben Zion. Speaker three twenty-nine, Drew Falconer. Speaker three hundred and thirty, Paula Weiss. Speaker three hundred and thirty-three, Mariana Shelley. Asking one more time for Speaker two hundred and forty, Priscilla Vano. If you're with us, please join. And this concludes our list of speakers, so please give me a second to get the rest of the information that we need to move on. I apologize, folks. I don't have my script right in front of me. But I do want to thank all of our residents and teachers and community members who participated in our sessions, both yesterday and today. Thank you for your input. Ms. Malberg, would you be able to email me the script? Yes, ma'am.
This is Karen COVID Sanders. Now that we've concluded the list, this public hearing is concluded, and we will take all of the information that we have received thus far and make sure that all the board members have it. We, anybody who wants to continue or wants to provide additional information or send in their remarks, they are certainly welcome to do so by sending it to the board clerk, and she will share it with the whole board.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman, Chair COVID Sanders. Should I close, or will you close?
You should close, Dr. Anderson.
I now have the information in front of me. Thank you. Thank you again all for virtually attending today's public hearing and for sharing your comments and concerns. This hearing is now adjourned.